Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Tchachinio, Mawikma, Karkin, Aloney peoples, and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy. I would like to welcome everyone to the January twenty-third special meeting of the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education. This meeting is really a workshop for the board to phone up on some of its skills around meetings. This meeting will provide public comment opportunities through the Zoom app or by telephone. To indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item, raise your hand by clicking on the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine if assessing the meeting by phone. In order to be recognized to speak, your hand must be raised before public comment begins. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. That said, Mr. Duffy, may we please have roll call?
Yes, President Phillips?
Here.
Clerk Smith Folds?
Here.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Here.
Trustee Reckler?
Good morning, I'm here.
And Trustee Christian?
Here.
We are all here.
Thank you very much, sir. I'd like to move on to item A four, which is public comment. And public comment is twenty minutes, minute and thirty seconds per person.
President Phillips, at the moment, I do not see any hands raised.
Go figure. Okay. So that said, we're going to move on to, I was gonna take a drink and thought I had. We will move on to item B one. This is planning, preparing for, and conducting school board meetings. What I want to do very briefly is I want to share my screen with you all for a moment to give you an idea of kind of how I've mapped this thing out in my mind. So you can, you know, take notes along the way however you would like, okay? Can everyone see this? Okay. So this is the rough outline for what we're gonna be following today. We're gonna begin with an exercise. And it is around what the topic is today, which is meetings. This is really a meeting about meetings. And so what I've done is I've kind of chunked out the different sections. So you'll see setting the meeting agenda. And then next to it, you'll see the board bylaw that kind of corresponds to that. And so these are the same board bylaws that were attached to the agenda, but they're just, you know, coordinated with wherever they belong. So we'll go, we'll talk about setting the meeting agenda, preparing for the meeting, and the meeting day. So and in meeting day, you know, what are the roles of the various people who are there? Decorum, meaning how we're supposed to conduct ourselves during meetings. We'll briefly talk about conflict of interest. And then there are some things that have come up since we have been together, whether it's come up individually or, you know, collectively where there have just been questions. So for example, closed session, there's been a lot of questions or comments around public comment. There have been questions about consent. And then there's been questions about rules of order. And all of those things kind of apply to what's going on on our actual meeting day. And so what I'll be doing at different times is clicking on, you know, those bylaws and clicking on Rosenberg's. And then we're gonna have, this is gonna be a little more free flowing than what we are traditionally doing just because of the subject matter of what we're trying to cover today. And then Mr. Duffy and I are gonna kind of tag team some of this stuff. So I'm gonna pull him in at different times. So does anybody have any questions about kind of what we're doing today? Okay. So I'm not seeing any, so we're gonna start with an exercise. And Trustee Reckler, who blessed all of us with this wonderful book around how not to be a bad board member. Or is it a horrible word? I can't remember which one. But she's gonna lead it, so now I'm gonna be quiet and I'm going to turn it over to Trustee Reckler.
Thank you. Good morning. So the book is How Not to Be a Terrible School Board Member, Lessons for School Administrators and Board Members by Richard E. Mayer. And it was suggested at when we went for CSBA training. And I bought one and I thought, you know, this is actually pretty good and it's really friendly. And, you know, we might learn, we might learn from it. So that was why I got them. And I already checked, you don't have to fill out a form seven hundred, it's in within the guidelines, so we're good. And so I, there's a number, there's a number of chapters, the one that Board Member Phillips, I think he's leading. I'm not sure what the full thing is going on here, but I think he's gonna lead up to, to why we're picking this. But it's a terrible habit, number five is to never question the administration. And I think it's about board members finding their voice. And so we'll, we'll, we'll start with that. So it's, and I, I'm gonna apologize in advance, I will not do it. Trustee Smith Folds, justice in telling the story, but I'll try. So it says eight fifteen PM, Maintenance and Operations Report. The next agenda item for tonight's board meeting is the Maintenance and Operations Report to be presented by Frank Forello, the District's Director of Maintenance and Operations, lovingly known as MO. The superintendent gives a brief introduction describing all the work that went into the report and stating that both she and the District's Administrative Committee approve it. Frank launches his PowerPoint, which essentially repeats the materials in the eight-page report you have already read in the agenda materials. The plan calls for spending nearly a million dollars on repaving school playgrounds and parking lots and lays out a systematic schedule for getting the job done over the next year. It's well-written and the money has already been allocated in the MO budget. Frank's slideshow ends with a slide that says, Questions? A long silence hangs over the room. And when you read the report at home at your kitchen table, you penciled in a few questions that occurred to you. Isn't it a little expensive? Are there cheaper ways to accomplish these goals? Can we hold off on parts of the job until next year? Or would that wind, or would that wind up costing us more in the long run? Don't we have other maintenance needs that will be neglected if we spend our entire maintenance budget on this project? Oh, my gosh, as you read over your penciled notes, you can see you were full of questions. Are there better ways to do this so we don't have to repay so often? Are harmful chemicals released into the air during the paving process or in the pavement itself? Do kids prefer to play on the grassy fields? You could ask all these questions, you suppose, but you fear that you would exasperate your fellow board members and offend your district administrators. After all, Frank Forello has been the MO Director for twenty years. And before that, he was a very successful building contractor. He knows all there is to know about school maintenance. You respect his knowledge and his commitment to the district. The superintendent and the lead administrators in the district have shaped the plan and approved it. You really don't know a thing about school maintenance, so shouldn't you just accept this fine report from the district's experts? The board president breaks the silence by directing a question to the superintendent. Do you need us to take a vote on this? That would allow us to go out to bid and stay on schedule. Debbie Dyson replies with a smile. The repaving plan is approved unanimously. Plan B. As you are moving on to the next item, you wonder if you did the right thing by not following up on your urge to ask some questions. Sure, you did the right thing, you tell yourself. These folks know what they're doing and you can always ask your questions outside the board meeting. You are sure you would just have been showing your ignorance and slowing down the meeting if you had asked your list of questions. Yet you have a nagging suspicion that failing to ask questions is a hallmark is of a terrible school board member. What should you have done? Place, it says to place check marks, but I'm just gonna read out a couple of answers and think about what you think, you know, your reaction would be. The first is, don't waste everyone's time with naive questions. The board meeting needs to move along efficiently. Ask any questions you have after the meeting or during a break later in the meeting. Ask your questions directly of the superintendent or the MO Director before the meeting, either by phone or email. Ask your questions at the meeting until you are fully satisfied that you understand what you are voting on. Concerning option one. Okay, I'm gonna hold. So thoughts from anyone? So to refresh your memory, it would be, don't waste everyone's time with naive questions. The board meeting needs to move along efficiently. Ask any questions you have after the meeting or during a break. Ask your questions directly of the superintendent or the MO Director before the meeting, either by phone or email. And ask your questions at the meeting until you're fully satisfied.
So Trustee Reckler, let's just go in order of the trustee area, that might be easier for people.
Sure. Okay, we'll start with Trustee Smith Folds.
I would probably do three. I would ask my questions before the meeting directly to the superintendent or to the supervisor. Or I would probably do four. To be quite honest, I would ask until I was satisfied at the meeting. Or so three or four, I'm assuming three is the right answer, but I, and I was reading along, so I'm kind of cheating, but I'm, but I would do three or four.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Any thoughts?
Yeah, I would basically look at option three. And then also just looking at, you know, how to be considerate of one another. So, but I would choose three.
Trustee Gonzalez, who is?
Thank you, Trustee Reckler. I agree with my colleagues, I would probably go with three. I would probably do a hybrid of three and four. Where, you know, I wanna get my answers before, but the questions that may not be answered or the questions that I really think would be important for the public to hear, I think those are the ones that I would choose to ask in public. And I'm so curious, I wanna go grab my book too. It's like, I see it, but it's really far, so.
Okay, and for, for me, I would probably do a hybrid of three and four. But what I've really been trying to do is be really thoughtful about what I ask and try to really, it's a learn, it's certainly a learning experience, but not to take a lot of time, but to just, like, what are like the three, you know, me, I'm really big about like threes and fives, you know, like, what are the three biggest things that, you know, will make the difference? Okay, where would you like me to go from now, President Phillips? Do you want me to read through the options or do we want to go to the superintendent?
Your own, President Phillips.
So I actually would like Mr. Duffy to, to respond to the questions. I'd like to respond as well.
Oh, absolutely, you should respond as well, that's right.
Yeah, he talked too much anyway. Okay. So to me, everybody who has responded thus far is, is correct. But I think it's, I think it's, this is a twofer. Like I think Mr. Gonzalez always said, a hybrid. And Mrs. Smith Folds kind of said the same thing. I would pick both. There, there will be times that come in your career on the board where you will have a thousand questions about a topic, right? It happens to all of us, but we can't ask a thousand questions in the meeting, right? So the way to get around that is to ask as many questions as you can beforehand. And then it, and then, that doesn't mean you don't ask any questions at the meeting. But if there are additional questions you have, or you, like Mr. Gonzalez always said, you can't get everything asked, you know, or answered before, then you, but it's both. The, the answer is really, in my opinion, three and four. It's not mutually exclusive. That's my opinion. Mister, I'm that, that's it for me, Trustee Reckler.
Thank you. Mr. Duffy?
I, I agree, I think it is a combination of three and four. And I think there's also, I would say, another piece of it, which is if we think, you know, something is, is going to provoke a lot of questions that might not be that self-explanatory, I think then it's incumbent on staff to try to give you a heads up, either in an email or a Friday letter, like, hey, this is a complex item or a big item that's coming, keep an eye on it. Or let us know if you have any specific questions or give you a little background. That's why we try to use the Friday letter sometimes or other means to sort of flag, hey, this one is, you know, it's really important or, you know. But generally, yeah, I think it is a combination of three and four. And then that means, and I think probably Mr. Phillips will talk about that, right? Just like, how do you make time to make sure you've read such a big agenda that has so much on it? So you can be really prepared.
Yeah, thank you. So may I, would you like me to read what they say? So option one, which is, you know, don't waste everyone's time with naive questions. The board meeting needs to move efficiently. The advice is, you have a responsibility to understand what you're voting on. So not to getting answers to your questions is a failure to uphold your responsibility. For option two, which is ask any questions you have after the meeting or during a break later in the meeting. Option two has the advantage of being less confrontational and also not using precious meeting time. It is unacceptable because it still leaves you uninformed when you have to vote. Option three, once again, to remind you, ask your questions directly of the superintendent or the MO Director before the meeting, either by phone or email. This is a very reasonable idea. It saves time during the meeting and it helps you to become a more informed voter. You might want to make sure your questions and answers are shared with all the board members before the meeting as well and that they become part of the public record. Option four, ask your questions at the meeting until you are fully satisfied that you understand what you're voting on. It's very reasonable, you should never vote on an item that you do not understand. Your job as a school board member is to ask questions, even naive ones on behalf of the community. Ask yourself, what would your constituents ask? You were never elected to be a rubber stamp. You were elected to vote intelligently with the best interests of the community in mind. You can't do that if you have a full page of unanswered questions. And now superintendent lessons learned. A rubber stamped board may seem like a superintendent's dream, but a more ideal situation is to have a board that seeks to be well-informed and deliberative in all of its decisions. And when board members ask questions, they should do so with respect for the expertise and commitment of the administration. And when administrators provide answers, they should also do so with the respect for board members who are seeking to fulfill their responsibility to the community to make informed decisions. Who knows, a good question or two might even result in improving a recommended course of action. Answering board member questions in a defensive way can create a tense moment that serves no one. Viewing questions as an attack on the administration's expertise is unhealthy. Decision-making is a team effort and the superintendent can greatly improve the effort by showing a willingness to provide all the information the board needs. And certainly, it's about us finding our voice and in certain instances having confidence. There's a lot of complex issues, there's a lot of complex documents. And, you know, a balancing act between what you really need to ask, how you ask it, and the manner in which you ask. And I, I'm certainly learning, so. Constantly a learning space.
Amen, amen, we're all learning and that's the reason that we're here today. We're learning together and that's okay. And as we continue to learn together, we'll get stronger and stronger and stronger. And so I do want to ask just a couple of questions about the exercise. And so the first question I would like to ask is, it says, under option three, Trustee Reckler, you might want to make sure your questions and answers are shared with all the board members before the meeting as well, and that they become a part of the public record. Mr. Duffy, can you just speak about how, if somebody does have a question and they send it to you, how that information might get facilitated to everyone else or how that process, what it might look like?
Yep. So we've tried to handle this over, at least while I've been here, to try to share back the questions and the answers that a board member has with the full board. I don't know that we always get it right, but just so that if you send us, hey, I have a question on this item. You know, or if you have multiple questions is often when we'll say, oh, we just received these questions from Trustee Reckler, sharing out with the full board the answers to these questions. So everybody can see, avoid some redundancy and make sure we're sharing those and board members can see the questions that, that have been raised. Usually that's on the agenda item. If you just send me a note, like, hey, I have a quick question on something random, then I, I'm not really sharing that back with everybody. But if you say, here are my questions about the bore, board meeting, usually then I will share those questions out with our staff to the appropriate staff. They come back to me and then I share them with the, the full board if we can do that in time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Duffy. So, so one of the things that he, he is saying to all of us is that if you have a question about an agenda item, that you can actually submit that question before, you know, before the meeting. So thank you for that, Mr. Duffy. And then the last thing, Trustee Reckler. Do you wanna, yes, sir?
Sorry, before we move on from that, could I ask a question about that specifically?
Yeah.
Oh, thank you so much. Mr. Duffy, would it be easier as well if we put in the email, please share these questions with the rest of the board? Or are you just gonna automatically share them? Cause I, I'm thinking of the example of like Summit, right? Like you didn't share all of them, but you shared when we put, please share. Like I, in my, my questions, right? Like you share the ones that I asked you to share, but not all of them. Would that make it easier or would you share all of them? Thank you, that was my question.
Well, I think, you know, we have a board here, obviously, that's new and board president. So I think whether we want to do this right now or maybe towards the end, we could make that decision collectively on how you would like to do that. I mean, it never hurts to, to do a reminder to, to us because sometimes when we're moving fast, you ask some questions, we give them back to you and we may not always remember like, okay, gotta share these all back out, especially if we're getting multiple emails. So that is always helpful. But then if we do as a team want to choose a very specific process, you know, of like, try to get questions by this day, we'll try to turn them around by that day. You know, we can also agree on something as well.
So just really quickly, and I'm gonna kind of jump in and out of stuff. So we haven't had our Brown Act training yet. And so what Mr. Duffy is doing is facilitating. He's making sure that questions that are being raised and the answers that are there are getting out to everybody, right? But he's not necessarily communicating messages between board members and whatnot. So I just kind of want us to roll back a little bit, right? And we haven't had the, the Brown Act training yet, so I think we're kind of, this is gonna be a little looser than normal, but I just kind of want to reel us back in on, on that one a little bit, if that makes sense, if people are getting what I'm saying. Okay, so Trustee Reckler, you're?
I believe Trustee Smith Folds was first, and I just have a couple, I have one question.
So my question is, if we have a board meeting on Wednesday, when do we send you or your staff the question? To have it in a timely manner that we can still be able to process the information?
Well, the easiest answer to that is the sooner the better. I would say, you know, if we get something Wednesday morning, it's really difficult because we are in the day and in the meetings and everything else. You know, if you get those to us by the close of business Monday, really gives us Tuesday to turn them around to you and get them to you the end of the day, Tuesday or first thing Wednesday. We've had board members in the past who've had like a really strong tradition of sending questions Sunday evening. I have a cabinet meeting every Monday morning at nine. So if we have your questions before that meeting, it's really helpful because we can unpack them together, especially if there's anything really complex that we, you know, need some time to, to dig into. So I would say sooner the better. Sunday night is really good. End of Monday is okay. Once we get into like late Tuesday, it's just, it's tougher.
So Sunday night is optimal, but that's where you would, that's the sweet spot. And then if we get it Sunday night, we'll be sure to have it Tuesday.
Yeah, but I also understand the agenda's published Friday, late Friday. You might have had a lot, super long work week and want to take the weekend off and want to look at the agenda on Monday. So that, you know, makes sense, like then maybe, you know, you're able to get them to us Monday evening. So we understand that. I think the hardest thing is just really late. If it's late and a single question, no problem. If it's late and like, here's twenty questions on Wednesday morning, that's tough.
Thank you.
Okay, so Ms. Smith Folds took my question, so that's great. So you'll have them Sunday evening and thank you for doing that and I'm not gonna repeat it. And then I don't know about the rest of the board, but I've now at this point received multiple Brown Act trainings. So maybe as a group we haven't, but everybody's gotten something, I believe. So I went through Lizzana Smith and CSBA and the superintendents and all the reading material. So at this point I have a library on the Brown Act, so. And I still, still learning, so.
Okay. Did anybody else have, Trustee Reckler, do you want to go through the rest of them and see if they had any questions? This is still, you're still.
Oh, okay, thank you. Any, any, any questions? I think that's really helpful to give us a cutoff. So traditionally on Sunday, I've put aside time to do that kind of stuff and that forward thinking so that I can make a Sunday deadline as well. So that I can make a Sunday deadline as well, that's like my planning, you know. Part of Sunday has always been planning and that processing for the week and so I, I'm very happy and would be able to meet that deadline.
And then the last one, superintendent lessons learned, and this is not just for Duffy, uh, Mr. Duffy, because we're doing all of this together, right? So in this scenario that we just went through, what could the superintendent have done? Um, I'm trying to remember the superintendent's name, but. What could she have done to help this board member? Not be in this situation or to handle this situation differently. And trustee Reckler, if you could kind of walk us through that individually, our thoughts.
Sure, so starting with Ms. Smith Folds. Any comments on that?
Trustee Reckler, can you come back to me? I have a comment, I guess.
I can, yeah, sure.
Okay, alright, I'll save it for just one second, I just want to frame it in my mind first.
Sure, President Phillips, do you want to go or do you want to go last?
I'll go whenever you tell me to.
Alright, if you, if you'd like to go ahead, sure.
Okay, um, so this board member had a lot of questions. And it seems like nobody checked in with this board member to see. This board member, is it, is a she, yes, nobody, it seems like nobody checked in with this board member to see. Where she was, you know, if she had any questions, uh, or if she had any concerns. She just kind of showed up at the meeting, right? And had to kind of figure it out, you know, on her own. And she would have navigated it better if someone I think had reached out to her before the meeting. To just check in with her and see if she had any, any concerns, so maybe the superintendent could have done that.
Okay, thank you.
I'm ready trustee Reckler.
Please, go ahead.
I think it's the lot about, it's just about relationship building, it feels like this trustee was, like trustee Phillips said, kind of out on her own. But it also feels like if she would have had more, uh, prepping, more. Kind of knowing who this guy, who the maintenance facilitator was and knowing more how that relationship goes and knowing. That there's already a built-in trust there, then it would have been able to alleviate some of her anxiety. Because she would have felt more a part of and invested in the conversation and what's coming before her, so she didn't have to feel. As if, okay, let me make sure every single thing is checked off because I don't want to make a mistake. But if it's, this is a trusted person that's been in the district for years and they've never, you know. Had a building fall on any kid, or you understand what I mean, like it would have been more, if she would have felt more. A part of, instead of on the outside, and I think that that's something that. Makes for a good board member, staff superintendent kind of relationship. Is incoming board members need to feel as if they are kind of already, or they're being welcomed. Into the flow of how things are going and that if they have a question, that that question, it's what, they're welcome to ask that question at any point.
Yeah, thank you, that was, that was great. Trustee Christian.
Yes, thank you trustee Reckler, um, just, you know, just looking at the whole scenario is to be inclusive and. Keep everybody informed and connected in order to build a great team. And if you have a great team, you'll have a winning team and, um, and. Where the, the level of understanding is there, where, um. Where you'd be able to navigate, uh. Through information during the board meeting, so the key to all of it is, is, is to keep everybody. Inclusive, clear, well, what's going on and making sure that the agenda, that you. You understanding what the process of what's in the agenda and how, and how to be affect, me, how to be able to approach it. That's pretty much, thank you.
Great, thank you. And trustee Gonzalez Hoi.
Thank you trustee Reckler, um, yeah, I agree with what, everything that our colleagues have shared. The only thing that I would add is that, um, we have this new vision, obviously of throwing some of the work into committees, which is great. And if we could have, you know, Mr. Duffy, you mentioned you will send us kind of additional information for board meetings that we should know. I would love to just get, we can't attend every committee meeting, of course, with everything that's going on. If we could get just like, reference this committee meeting if you would like to watch the discussion about this item, right? There's many items that are going to come to us that are not going to go to committee, but the ones that do, and there's like. A good conversation, a lot of questions from the trustees in that committee, uh, it might help us be prepared too, right? So that it's less time for staff and less time for us as well, uh, at the actual board meeting. That was the only thing that I was going to add, thanks.
Thank you, yeah, I've been thinking about the committees too, because we had a meeting yesterday, which I'm still trying to process. But for me, this is all about relationship building and the check-ins to establish trust, establish relationships. And perhaps pull out, I would probably concentrate more on board members that are quieter, just to, you know. Do you want to, it just, and there's a lot of training in this, I mean, this is not, this is not easy. And, you know, maybe take one particular agenda item and take it apart and be like, okay, what, you know. What questions do you have on this one, hey, that might be a great thing to ask, what, what, you know, how would you follow up? You know, what would, what might be a follow-up question and start to teach people and, you know, develop the comfort to ask. The questions and to take away the fear, there's a lot of fear, you know, in budgeting and facilities, I mean, these are really very, it's a very complex. And to find your voice and feel confident. In, in complex matters, you know, it just, it, it really takes a lot of handholding and, um, and support, so. We've built that together.
Trustee Reckler, is it a Brown Act violation if I say that I listened to a meeting yesterday and it was incredibly great? It was very long, but it was a great meeting, is that a Brown Act violation? Okay, thank you, I did listen to a meeting yesterday, trustee Reckler, it was your meeting, it was great, it was informative. It was long and you are a champion, it was, you held in there, so I just want to put that out there that it was, it was a long one. But I was listening, so I was able to go to the restroom when I needed, so it was, it was, it was good, so I just wanted to let you know that you did very well.
So, thank you for that, and in that committee, you know, that, you know, this is, this is like some, you know. Trustee Smith Folds is going to understand that, understand this, women doing this stuff is like. Hard, right? It's hard.
It is, and you, you, you gentlemen, y'all have a personality. Gentlemen have a personality and it's, it's, uh. Trustee Reckler, you're right, it is a different, we are navigating multiple roads when we're doing this. And I guess that's another one of the interesting scenarios here is because it was a woman trustee in this scenario particularly. And she was trying to. She was trying to navigate that and it does become, it becomes interesting. I mean, for me personally, I like to build stuff up before I ask, it's just the teacher in me. So it becomes like, it's very much, are you going to ask a question, I'm like, I am, I promise, just give me a second, I just get a little build up, a little, you know, so it. It's a learning, it is a learning process, so thank you for acknowledging that, that we do have a additional road to travel on this.
We, we absolutely do, there, there is no question, and so in that particular committee, you know, it, I, I am. Whatever I can do to make it safe, there are no stupid questions, you know. I, I am going to work my hardest to make it accommodating and everybody to have a learning experience there, so thank you, that, that means a lot to me. Yeah, it was super long, but you know what, alright, we'll, we'll work through it and I'll send staff flowers to. And then the other thing about that is so that how do we establish trust in that meeting? So we had this long debrief and we're going to bring you a synop, you know, a synopsis. And you need to trust that we did the work in that committee and that we're not going to have another three-hour. Meeting, you know, when we come to the board, so we'll, we have to navigate that together. Um, so, and that's just going to take a lot of, you know. Communication in this crazy Brown Act when we can't actually speak to each other, so that's, I'm, I'm trying to. My biggest, my biggest obstacle right now is I don't know how to get anything done. Like, all of my traditional communication routes are shut off. So.
But I think one of the good things is what we find is that we ask each other's questions.
Right.
Like, you know what I mean, like, we really do have like this kind of thing where it's like, oh, I was just thinking about that. And it becomes slightly annoying because then you're like, that was right here on my list, like I was going to ask that, so I think that it's. It's actually, it's a good thing that we have, uh. That we're able to kind of cover, we have the basis that we cover to make sure that our, to make sure that the public is aware of everything. So I think that that's actually a good thing and we all come from, we bring in experience and exposure from every place. That's going to kind of hit everybody who's watching and everybody who's impacted, so I think we have, that's a bonus for us in this school board.
And, you know, one of the things I want to do, and once again, I don't know how to do this, I want to help you. I want to help trustee Christian, you know, I want to, you know, hey, this is how I thought about this or how I planned it. Um, and, you know, I, I don't know how to get that done.
So, I'm just going to just, butt in just a little bit, right? No, 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 it's okay, right, so, um, some of you have made it very clear that you want, uh, development. So this kind of thing that we're doing right now, so this doesn't have to be the first time. And we don't have to kind of like cram everything and we, I, I promise you we'll come back, right? So like, but like on this one, uh, like we're going to do the meeting about the meeting, right? But we can talk about. You know, best ways for the committee, we, all of these things that we're talking about, we can, we can do it, but it's a lot of information, right? And it all can't be covered like in one sitting, if that, you know, if, you know, if that makes sense, right? But we'll do it, right, so I mean, even if it takes more time and it will, uh, it'll make us a stronger unit. Governance team and that'll make, you know, that will benefit. Our students, so we'll, we'll do it, right? It's like, so, um, trustee Reckler, do you want to ask Mr. Duffy? What he thinks?
Mr. Duffy, what do you think?
Well, thanks trustee Reckler, um. So I think. It is so much about relationship as folks have mentioned, to just be able to. Share information in a really trusting way. And I also think right now what we've set up, which is five committees, which are Brown Act board committees. That have to be posted, right, plus regular board meetings, plus study sessions, plus retreats. Things are moving really quickly and we're moving fast to try to get everything posted in a timely way, get the information clear. So I, yeah, I would ask like, everybody try to assume positive intent if something. Doesn't get answered quickly or posted quickly, I think we'll keep working on, you know, some tools maybe that we can use. To capture questions together, et cetera. But, you know, and I have to. I just have to keep remembering to check in with you guys as much as possible, uh, but like, not just one-on-ones. Not necessarily board meeting prep, but like, hey, this just came up, let me check in with you, the whole trustee area thing is brand new. And each board member's really different, you know, we, some of your predecessors didn't want to necessarily. You know, uh, do things maybe that you want to do, maybe they didn't want to be like. In political conversations, or maybe they didn't want to, I don't know, everybody's different, right? So we're just adjusting to new folks and a new structure, so I just, you know, ask your patience for that. And if something feels like it gets dropped, just please ask us, because, you know, we, our job is to make you feel as. Like comfortable and successful as you can be, that you get up on the dais and you're informed. Cause a lot of the decisions that you're asked to make, you know, this, this scenario in this one was mild. But, you know, there's always, there are big things that you're asked to do, whether it's a layoff or, you know, a cut. Or, uh, going back to school, you know, there's big stuff, so we want to make sure you're as informed as possible and, you know. If we drop the ball, just let us know, because sometimes we don't know what we don't know, like we didn't know that you didn't get that answer, so. You know, but my reflection to kind of bring it back is just to like, stay in touch and be in relationship.
Trustee Gonzalez Hoi.
Thank you trustee Reckler, uh, what Mr. Duffy said made me think of a question, which is. You know, because of my background, it comes up very easily for me to reach out to Dr. Wald if I have a question or, right? But, uh, Mr. Duffy, to set up a process to ask questions directly of your cabinet. Would you prefer, after we look at an agenda on Friday, right, or Sunday, whenever we look. That by Sunday night, we let you know, hey, we would like, like, for example, I, I struggle when it comes to special ed issues, right? Because it's so much legality behind it, right, like, could I request on Sunday night, uh, Mr. Duffy, I would like to meet with doctor, with Ms. Hardy. By Wednesday, it, would you set up that time, would you prefer that we do that by Sunday night, Monday night? Obviously probably not Tuesday now or Wednesday morning, but, uh, when would you prefer that? Because I think that sometimes for me, it's easier to have a conversation, like trustee Phillips said earlier, than, than, than. Write all my questions and send them, right, because a lot of the time I actually don't understand, to be vulnerable, right? I don't understand the topic, right, sometimes bonds are really hard to understand, right? So, so. When would you want us to reach out to you to set up those meetings with your cabinet?
Yeah, I think especially if you'd like a meeting, I would say if you could do that by Sunday night, that would be helpful. Because then we can, you know, try to rearrange people's schedules. And I would say, you know, on the email. You could, you know, also say like, hey, could we get a minute, could I get a minute to check in with you about it, right? Because sometimes listing fifteen, twenty questions. It is overwhelming and it feels overwhelming, and when the staff gets that list, sometimes it's like, oh my goodness, how are we going to get all these answered? So if you, you know, sometimes feel like I just need a cup, I just need a few minutes to talk this through. That's great, uh, we just want to be able to give you that time.
Thank you. Trustee Christian, anything you'd care to add?
Yeah, I would just, well, thank you trustee Reckler, uh, I would just agree with everybody at this moment, it is to have, you know, that clarification. You know, um, so by submitting it on Sunday, Sunday night, then that way. We'll be able to get that answer, so, uh, I agree with, uh, everything being said so far, thank you.
Thank you, as far as my comment, I mean, I'd like to act as a resource, I don't know how to do that with the Brown Act, honestly. So, you know, I'd, I'd love to sit down with any of these trustees and just be like, hey, this is, this is how I thought through my agenda. This is how I, you know, this is the research I did prior, this is the, you know, just like how I prepped myself. You know, I'd love to share that.
So, just really quickly, and I see Mr. Duffy later on, um, in this discussion, we are going to have. A, a conversation about how to prepare for meetings, uh, so. I'm not trying to, to, to stop it, I'm just letting you know, it's going to come, right? And, so, yeah.
Okay, that's fine. Cause that's a, you know, that's a best practice that, you know, maybe it's helpful to people here.
So, no, 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 thank you, and so, so I want to just say like really quickly, uh, thank you to trustee Reckler for leading us through that. We did, and thank you for purchasing the books too. We did that because. That scenario encompassed a whole lot, right? It encompassed the agenda, you know, that was set, it encompassed the flow of a meeting. It encompassed, you know, the person having questions and not necessarily knowing how to come in. It, 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 that one scenario wrapped up a whole bunch of things, so as we move through this, uh, discussion. So as we move through this, uh, discussion today, uh, I want you to think about the things that we just discussed. In this scenario, um, the answers, uh, that we talked about. The things that we talked about that could have been done differently, uh, to help this trustee, uh, you know, feel comfortable on the dais. I want you to think about all of those things and, and kind of how those things relate to what we're about to discuss. Because we're about to go through, uh, our bylaws. And we will have, uh, Mr. Duffy, uh, responding to questions for you. I will respond to questions for you as well. And then you'll be able to ask questions, uh, about these things too. So this meeting really is a meeting about meetings. So we all get comfortable, um, in that space, okay? And so the, the first thing that I'm going to do is, and I'm sorry, Mr. Duffy, you had raised your hand at the end. Did you have something to add? Okay, so the first thing I'm going to do, um, is I'm going to go back to share screen for a moment. And I'm going to pull up our first board bylaw. Um, and where we're going to start is the very beginning, right? Because before there is a meeting, there has to be an agenda, right? So we want to kind of demystify for you how the agenda is created. And then what actually happens in agenda setting, because I think there's only. Only two of the trustees have been in agenda setting. And so we'll just kind of try to demystify that for you, okay? Um, and as we go, if you have questions, uh, we'll be able to ask your questions and, and, and get answers, all right? So. All right, so we did the exercise. And again, I'm just sharing this not necessarily because it's a meeting document. It's just me mapping this thing out in my mind so we could get through it. So, uh, we're going to go to board bylaw ninety-three, twenty-two. Okay, so this is our board bylaw, uh, that deals with. I cannot believe I just did that. I am so sorry. This is our board bylaw that deals with, uh. Agenda setting. And so there's more in it than that. So the things that I've gone through and highlighted are kind of the things that I think are relevant to the discussion of the meeting about the meeting. But there's obviously way more in there. And if you want to take the time to read that, you should. But I'm just focusing today on certain parts of it. So, um, and I don't want to read all of this by myself, um, through the meeting. So if we can take turns, if people are comfortable with that. I would really appreciate that. So, uh, the first one is agenda preparation. So trustee Smith Folds, if you don't mind, if you can take this one, um, and just read the highlighted section. And then. Mr. Duffy, um, if you could kind of expound on it, because like that's like literally what happens on paper. But there's, obviously there's more dynamic to it than that. Um, and then any questions that the body has about what's going on, uh, or for clarification. Please ask, okay? Trustee Smith Folds, can you do that for us? I didn't, couldn't see your.
For sure. Just give me one second. I was a, um, I was a delayed reader, so I have to pre-read and then I have to read out loud. So just give me one second to finish pre-reading.
No problem. Thank you for doing this.
No worries. Okay, here we go. Agenda preparation. The superintendent, a secretary to the board, in consultation with the board president and the board clerk, where possible, shall prepare the agenda for each regular and special meeting. The superintendent and the board president jointly determine the agenda items with input from the board clerk where possible. Any board member or any member of the public may request that a matter within the jurisdiction of the board be placed on the agenda of a regular meeting. The request must be in writing and be submitted for consideration to the superintendent or designate with supporting documents and information. If any, at least two weeks before the scheduled meeting date. Items submitted less than two weeks, less than two week before the scheduled meeting date may be postponed to a later meeting in order to allow sufficient time for consideration and research of the issue.
Thank you so much, ma'am. Mr. Duffy, uh, if you could just take a moment and unpack that for the group, that would be great.
Yep, so. The way, you know, we work on the agendas, which I think this describes in broad strokes. Is, you know, to bring together a few different things that help us get to a final agenda. Probably the most important thing for the board to remember is the school district works on a calendar year. It's truly a calendar system, as you know. School opens, school closes, right? We have to adopt a budget, we have to pass that budget. We have to hire people, we have to let them go by a certain date, right? There's so many annual statutory deadlines that the staff, especially kind of the mid-level management team. Is just working those cycles annually, right? What they have to do. And then there's plenty of other statutory deadlines. So what we do is Debbie, uh, my secretary. You know. And Rosa, but really Debbie, um, she keeps sort of an annual recording of the things that both have happened and have to happen. So we have a board internal spreadsheet where all the items sort of that have come the year before are on there just to keep on everybody's mind. Okay, this comes at this time, right? And some of that is also not required things, but you know, we did a resolution on this day, we did this, you know, X, Y, Z. So within that calendar, then we have the cabinet team putting in their statutory requirements, right? Like, Dr. Wald's going to insert first interim budget's going to go on this date. Second interim budget's going to go on that date. LCAP annual review is going to go on that date, right? March fifteenth letters to staff or any, you know, is going to go on the first meeting in March. So that's put in. And then the cabinet will also bring any, you know, big items, right? Like Louis might say, I've got to get this thing out to bid. Louis Free is got to get this facility project out to bid. I need it on this agenda here today. So they put in what they think is, you know, most pressing. And then we combine that with requests we've heard from the board, right? Over time. And we bring all of that to agenda setting to be able to say, here's what we've got for the agenda. And then there's sort of this discussion with the board leaders of like, yep. You know, or maybe that's too much, can we push that, what's able to be moved? I think as a board member, there's this really pressing thing that we need to talk about. Can we make space for that? So that's, you know, without getting too much into like discussion versus action and all of that. That's really sort of how our context. Gives rise to the agenda. And I hope that's helpful. Happy to take any questions.
It is, and, uh, we're going to go and we're going to stay in the same order, uh, which is the order of your trustee area. And if someone, and here's the other thing, uh, I'm going to say about meetings. If you don't have a question, it's okay. If you don't have a comment, it's okay. If you do, that's okay too. So, um, in any of these situations where I'm asking, oh, do you have, it's okay if you don't, okay? You don't ever have to feel like you have to say something, okay? I just want to put that out there for you. So, um, Mrs. Smith Folds, do you have any questions about what you just said?
I do. Are we going to have time for comments too, or just questions?
So what we're doing right now, uh, because we got a lot of stuff to kind of get through, right? Um, and so if people have, you know, we did the comments with the exercises because it was kind of, you know, an exercise and, and I wanted, it was a team building thing too. But right now is, is really kind of a space for you to get. Everybody to get their questions answered, because I know people had a lot of questions. And then if there are other things that we need to follow up on, we can. So at the end, you know, we, we can't do that, but right now, if you could just, we could focus on the questions.
So my question is, do we have access as a board to the calendar that you were just talking about? I think it would be helpful, that's the question. Do we have access to the calendar that you were just referring to?
Yes and no. So I'll say two things, like we have, uh, an internal spreadsheet that I work on with Debbie. But now, that's the no. The yes is we've now created a board calendar for you, which Rosa just shared with you, I think, yesterday. Which now will have all of your board meetings laid out and all of the committee meetings on there. And what we're going to do is in the description. Uh, area, list out sort of the big items that we know are happening on that date. So that is going to be your, like, a multi-board meeting look. So it gives you the kind of long-term plan of this is what board meetings are coming and this is what's on them. While I keep the sort of crazier, sloppier spreadsheet with, uh, Debbie and myself as we're always, you know, adding and changing. So I think that's what we've landed on so that you guys ha- have that view and you can see out what's coming. So does, I hope that answers it.
So it will have, we have access to a calendar that Ms. Rosa created that's going to have when our board meetings are, when the subcommittee meetings are. And it's going to have those big ticket item dates on there. Is that what I heard?
A big ticket item topics, uh, so like in the description. Yes, and it was shared with you yesterday, so you should have seen that from Rosa. And if we have a minute today, we can click on it and look at it if you would like. And we can see like, okay, that's clear or that's not clear. But that's our, uh, that's what we're going to go with to give you sort of the long view of here's what's coming and here's what's on those agendas.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Christian, do you have any questions about what he just? And, and, and let me say this too, so like, some of this stuff overlaps. So we'll get to other areas that, of discussion today and we'll double back on this because there's a lot of overlap, right? So like trustee Reckler, uh, spoke about, you know, how do we know what's going on in the other committees? For example, I said, no, Mr. Gonzalez Hoy talked about that, right? So like this calendar that Mr. Duffy just talked about, this is one way, right? That we'll be able to know when the other committees are meeting and, and, and kind of what's going on. So just remember, like, even though, like, we're doing this in a kind of linear way, there's a lot of overlap. Um, and, and, and answer to a question may come later. But, Mr. Christian.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, President Phillips. It's, uh, actually the, the calendar. Which would be very helpful and, um, and that was, would have been one of my questions. Thank you, uh, trustee Smith Folds for, for that. But yeah, that, the calendar will be very helpful, uh, to us to, to stay. It, I mean, stay on top of everything. Thank you.
And, uh, thank you, sir, Mr. Gonzalez Hoy.
Thank you. Um, I just have one question, which is, uh, the request to put something in the agenda. Obviously it's in writing, it says it's in writing, but what would be the format? I know passports have done it in so many different ways. Which way could, can I, um, ask for something to put on the agenda? Uh, and this could be obviously for the three of you. And, and, um, I just want to say, I just want to give a super quick shout out to Debbie. I know she's watching. She's just doing such a kick-ass job to support us and answer all my questions. So I just wanted to say thank you for, for all the work she's doing. Thank you.
Amen. So there have been a lot, I'm going to take this one, there have been a lot of discussions about, you know, agenda items and, and, and forms and all kinds of stuff. So you have two things that you can, can do, okay? So at the end of our meetings, there is, uh, pulling up an agenda. Right now. Sorry, I got too many, too many papers around here. So in item G, uh, in our agenda, right? If you want to like have space to talk about, like something that you want to see or do, like you can talk about that in item G. Because like we're all there listening, you know, at the same time. But then, you know, and it, and you don't have to do this, but I'm just saying that's the space where you can talk about something, you know? A designated space, but then in addition to that, um, the board bylaw, which you're referring to, because it is very important that everybody knows how to do this. You don't need to like do a form or anything like that, man, just send an email, you know? The board bylaw, um, asks for the email to be sent to the superintendent. But what really happens is the stuff ends up going to the board president, right? Um, and then the clerk ends up hearing about it too, but it definitely ends up going to the board president because that discussion happens. But what I've done in the past is I've emailed the superintendent and I've CC'd the board president. You know, just to make sure I'm covering both, you know, basis. And, and that's, that's fine. And if somebody has a question, um, then, you know, they'll follow up. And there's going to be a third way to do this, you know, as well. So we are doing more of our work in the committees now, uh, than has happened in the past. So, uh, what will happen, I'll give you a, a, an example. Committee X, um, is working on this issue. And it, uh, has a recommendation now, right? Each one of you, um, is a chair of a different committee. So, uh, you'll have a monthly report that you do as well. Um, and if your committee has a recommendation to the, to the board, you need to say that in your monthly report. And so that's the other way that, uh, at least from the committees, that board leadership and the superintendent are going to hear the recommendations. And then so, um, you know, if there's a recommendation coming out of the committee, you know, and the board asks you to, you know, work on that, right? Then it will go, come out in, in an agenda, a future agenda that makes sense, right? So the recommendation could be taken up. So there's really just three ways, um, that, you know, one is you have that agenda space to talk about items you want to see. Two, if it's coming, and that's as an individual, you could do that. Two, you know, do follow the bylaw so it's recorded, right? Because sometimes people might say something in a meeting and, and people missed it or forgot or whatever. So, you know, follow up with the bylaw, send that email to the superintendent, you know, copy, uh, the, the board president, which is what I've always done, right? And then three, you know, if it's a committee recommendation, you know, make sure that, you know, when you give your report, which you will all be doing. That, um, you put your recommendation in the, in, in your report. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yeah, thank you, President Phillips.
Okay. And trustee Reckler.
Thank you. I don't have any questions. I do have a couple of comments.
Okay, hold on one second, let me move down. A little bit and make sure that I'm not missing. Make sure that I'm not missing anything in here for now. Okay, consent items, this has come up. Yes, ma'am.
I just had a, a second question. I'm sorry for having to double back. Why is it that we have so many people in agenda setting? The bylaw says that it should be the superintendent, who is the secretary of the board and the board president and the clerk where possible. Is there a reason why we have so many people in our agenda setting? Not, I'm just asking the question just to figure out why do we do it that way?
I can obviously speak to that, um, Mr. Phillips, is that okay? Yeah, you know, we've, we've done this a couple of different ways, um, you know, through the years. Starting last year, maybe a year and a half ago, uh, we just felt like we were getting so many questions in agenda setting. That were very detailed. That we decided, I decided to bring in cabinet members so they were, you know, ready, could give board members answers. you know, ready, could give board members answers right there. They could also give them some real-time thinking. And I think it doesn't hurt, you know, for cabinet sometimes as they potentially become the future leaders of the district to get some of that practice. So that's kind of, you know, it was really just meant to, to be able to be right there for board members and get them information like, okay, why are we doing this item right this minute? And, you know, what's the detail that forces this to have to go today? You know, something like that. You know, so that's, that's how we kind of came to that. But, you know, it, it has definitely taken different forms over the years.
Thank you so much for that answer. I appreciate that clarification.
Okay. And, and so here's the other thing. So like, these, we're actually going through our board bylaws right now, or some of our board bylaws, right? And so there may be something that somebody sees that they want to change or propose changes or two. And, and that is, you know, obviously something that you could, you can propose whatever you want to propose, right? This discussion, though, people asked for an orientation around what we do and the way we do it. So this discussion today is about just what, what people asked for, right? If somebody wants to propose a change to something, that, that's their right. But that's not what we're meeting for today, right? This is the orientation that people are asking for. Mr. Duffy, let's see. So consent is something that has come up in our meetings, and it's also something that comes up in agenda setting. I know board members have asked how things get on consent. So Trustee Smith Folds, if you don't mind, I'm going to stay with you on this board bylaw. And then I'll switch to another member when we go to the next one. Can you read this highlighted section for consent, please?
Yes, I can. Consent items. In order to promote efficient meetings, the board may act upon more than one item by a single vote through the use of a consent agenda. A consent, consent item shall be items of a routine nature or items for which no board discussion is anticipated and for which the superintendent recommends approval.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Duffy, board members have asked how things get on consent, why certain things are on consent. You know, what is it, what is routine nature? You know, okay, so can you just unpack for the board how you decide, you know, what to put under consent on that draft agenda?
Yep. So there are some recurring categories on consent that are always there, such as contracts, fundraising activity, acceptance of donations. So anything that we think is pretty self-explanatory, things that maybe are, we've been doing annually, things that we believe we can give you enough information through a Friday memo or other get into consent. I do think this one is, is worth talking about for a little bit because over the previous years, we have pulled so many items off of consent, which really means we're not on the same page, right? Where we think, okay, this is, we're ready for consent. And a board member saying, no, I have a number of questions about this, or I want to pull it because I think it requires deeper conversation. And that it's not, it's both not a good look. But then it's, it reflects back to us on staff that's, we miss, we're missing something. So that's kind of how we do it. I think it does go back to trust relationship because we are asking you to basically consent to accept these items without discussion. And I think at times that can make board members really nervous, like I'm just giving a rubber stamp, kind of like the, the original example that you opened the, the meeting with. And, and we want to not create that culture where it looks like a rubber stamp. You know, there's a lot of facilities items on there that are now either statutorily required or they've come into our bylaws as required. You'll see a lot of HR items, you know, things that are, you know, the board has to take action by law on this. It has to go through the board, but we don't believe it needs a big discussion. So that's kind of, you know, usually how we, we get there on consent.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. And I didn't highlight this section, but Trustee Smith Folds, if you could take a moment and that next paragraph, if you could read that since we're here, that would be great.
In accordance with law, the public has a right to comment on any consent item. At the request of any member of the board, any item on the consent agenda shall be removed and given individual consideration for action as a regular agenda item. President Phillips, can you hear my TV in the other room? It's Saturday and they're watching cartoons. Can you hear that? Okay, good. I'm going to tell them to turn it down. All right, I'm going to put myself back on mute and try to handle that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The reason that I asked Trustee Smith Folds to read that is really because of that. Which line is it? That second sentence, at the request of any member of the board. So all of you, even if something goes on consent, all of you do have the ability to pull it off. Right? So if there's something on there that you do want to have a discussion about, or you feel that there's a need to have discussion about, you have the ability to pull it off. There also may be some things, you may have a pet peeve. I don't know what that is, right? But you may have a pet peeve that where you think a certain thing just doesn't belong on consent. And that, that doesn't mean that it can't be on there, but just for whatever reason, you feel like it shouldn't be there. I'll give you an example, and I'll use myself as an example. I really like Williams Reports to not be on consent. And the reason why I like them to not be on consent is because this district has a history of having complaints for various things filed against it. And so when there are, and then people feeling that we're not being transparent around those complaints, right? So I feel personally, and there's no law requirement for what I'm about to say, but I feel personally that the Williams Reports should be aired publicly. So when there's a problem, the public knows that we're not bearing it or trying to hide it. And conversely, when we are squeaky clean and they've done their audits and they don't find anything, we could say, hey, I know we've had trouble in the past, you know, but look at this, look at this report. They did their audit, the county, you know, did its review and it didn't find anything. So like, that's a pet peeve of mine. There's no reason it can't be on consent, right? So there may be things that you all have that are pet peeves, right? And the board leadership needs to know what those things are. And the superintendent needs to know what those things are. Because it's really silly that if I know Mr. Gonzalez Hoi does not like a certain thing to be on consent. And I keep putting it on consent and then he just keeps coming to every board meeting and taking it off. Like, that is so dysfunctional. So, you know, if there are things that you all have that are just pet peeves, and I think this goes to kind of what Mr. Duffy is saying as well around the alignment, right? Then like, just send an email to the superintendent, you can copy me and just say, hey, you know, this is a pet peeve for me. And I'm not talking about like every single item. I'm talking about like that one that like, you know, gets under your saddle because it's like, they know I'm going to pull it, you know, why are they doing this? That, that's what I'm talking about right now. Just send us an email. So, you know, we could put it, you know, elsewhere on the agenda. So, you know, you're not put in a place where you have to keep doing that every meeting. Does that make sense? Everybody? Okay, okay. So are there any questions on that particular issue around the consent items? Okay. I need to pull my screen back out so I can see everybody. I saw Trustee Reckler's hand go up. Did anybody else's hand go up just so I could keep the order? No. Okay, Trustee Reckler?
Are there commonly accepted frameworks of what shows up on consent and what doesn't? Perhaps this is a question for the superintendent?
Yes, there are. I think we could, we could provide you with that. We don't, I mean, we haven't been consistently referring to one particular framework. But I think through CSBA, through, you know, other organizations that deal with governance, there are recommendations of what clearly goes on consent and what doesn't. So I'm happy to, you know, pull a few of those and share. That would be helpful.
Yeah, or if you could just even send me where they are so I could take a look at them. This to me seems like the biggest black hole that I, that I navigate through. And what I hope for the future is, okay, these guys are on the facilities committee, they deeply understand the material. If they're not pulling it, you know, I'm not going to pull it. Okay, these guys are, you know, like whatever it is that we have our own specialties and so that we're, we're comfortable and we're relying on each other.
Can I say one more thing? One of the other complications with consent, the way we have it, is if it is pulled, it goes to the end of the meeting. So we have staff on there who usually comes on, you know, or maybe they're not on. But if a consent item is pulled, we often don't know why is it being pulled right there, right? So if there hasn't been communication between board and superintendent, it's pulled. We don't know why it's pulled. And it might not be heard till, I know we're working hard to get to 10:30, but it might not be heard until 11:00, 11:30 if it's the very last thing, right? And then we have staff just waiting or they're, you know, cabinet will call them and say, hey, this item's been pulled. I need you to get on in case there's a detailed question that we might not have the, that, you know, you know, because you're the person who's been really working on it. And that's really tricky too, right? Because it just, I think, creates a lot of both frustration, but then people are tired because they're up super late. So I think just another reason for us to just work hard to get, do our best with consent, you know, ahead of time so that we feel like everybody has their, their answers as best we can do and we move through it.
Okay, I do not want to hamstring the district. That, I do not want to do that. And this is a lot about trust in establishing a common framework. And I've had questions, as you know, oh gee, that seems like a great agenda item. Why is it on consent? Oh, that's an agenda item. Why isn't that a consent item? You know, so I think it's like in your own mind, what you're thinking and what your level of trust is.
Do, you know, go over consent in agenda setting. So we're also going to really count on our board leaders to say like, this might be for open or hey, somebody might have, really have a question about that. So do some more due diligence on it.
So part, part of it, Mr. Duffy, so two things, if you can get some of those documents that you're talking about and send those out so people have them. Just so they have more information. And then also part of it, right, is knowing, back to the relationship thing, right, is knowing board members, right, and knowing like what's important to them. Like, for example, I pulled the contract because I knew that Mr. Gonzalez Hoi would probably want to have a deeper look at that, right? And that was that elevation contract. Right? So sometimes, you know, that, that's just, that's one example, right? And so it, it, it does go back again to like relationship and, and knowing, knowing your colleagues, right? If I know that, you know, Mr. Christian cares very deeply about a certain issue and that he's going to have comments on that, then, you know, it shouldn't go on consent. You know, even if all of us think that it's like a rubber stamp, easy kind of thing, right? So it does go to relationship, but if we can just get those documents, that would be great. And Trustee Reckler, do you have, if you do us fine, but do you have any other questions about consent?
I did have one thing which I lost, so, so that's fine. I mean, I did have a check-in which was like super helpful, you know, I was just like, hey, what's up with this or? Oh, here is the comment. So just the other comment is, and this is going to take a while, but we still need to set our goals and figure out how to, you know, we need to set our goals. That gets laid into a calendar as well. And then we establish touchpoints which I think will help us. So with elevation, if somewhere in a master plan and we're aware of it, it says we need a different reporting system or whatever, and we know that, then that could be a consent item because we've discussed it ahead of time and we know it's in the plan. So there, I think there are some proactive things we can do in our own planning and in our own strategies that relate back to our own goals that might help too. That is not a tomorrow thing though, but I think it's long term.
Okay. Thank you. Let me just scroll down to make sure that I'm not missing anything. That's nine. Okay, so that's setting, okay. All right, so what I'm going to do is the next bullet, and you can't see it because it's on that outline that, you know, and I'll have my screen up and I have a paper. So the next bullet on that outline is actually preparing for the meeting, okay? So now we're walking through this, right? So what's happened is the agenda has been set, right? Everybody understands how the agenda was set. Does anybody have any questions about how the agenda was set before we move to the next bullet? Okay, so the agenda was set, and now we have to prepare for the meeting. All right, so each one of us has to do, you know, preparation. And that's the next bullet. That's where we are, okay? So I'm going to leave a board bylaw 9322. And I'm going to just scroll down because, and this goes back to what I was saying, our bylaws are kind of fragmented. There are pieces of this here and pieces of that there. So we'll be using some of the same bylaws, even though, because they touch on multiple things. All right. So I'm, I'm sticking with you if you don't mind, ma'am. Do you see that last highlighted line down there?
Sure. And Superintendent Duffy, I need access to that calendar. It says, I've tried to click on it and it says you have to have access, so I don't have access. Board members shall review agenda materials before each meeting. Individual members may confer directly with the superintendent or designate to request additional information on agenda items.
Thank you very much, ma'am. So we are now kind of moving into, or have moved into the preparation. So I know all of you do this. Here, I know all of you do this. So, you know, I, I know I'm preaching to the choir, but board members shall review agenda materials before each meeting, right? That means that we are supposed to prepare for the meetings. There will be times that we have meetings where it's not possible for whatever reason to Where it's not possible for whatever reason to, you know, review everything beforehand. Sometimes there will be things that are attached to the agenda, uh. You know, well, that, that's a bad example, not necessarily attached to it. Sometimes there will be things where we'll have a presenter come in and they'll talk about something. County health officer is a great example, right? So the county health officer is putting together data for us. Uh, and it is not, you know, attached to the agenda on Friday. You know, our George Rutherford, uh, the head of infectious disease for UCSF, you know, he, you know, sends us a presentation. Uh, about COVID, uh. Actually, heck, he didn't even send it to us before the meeting. He, he, he sent the actual presentation the day after the meeting. Um, so like that's an example where we were receiving a slideshow presentation and we actually didn't have it, right? Uh, because we were working, uh. You know, with this person, um, and that's just how it happened. So, you know, there will be times when that doesn't, but in general. Like, we all need to read the materials, um, and we need to come prepared, uh, to the meetings. Uh, the second sentence is, you know, if individual members may contact the superintendent or the designee. That's kind of what we were talking about earlier, you know, in the meeting. Uh, where we could reach out to Mr. Duffy, you know, if it's a specific department head, you know, send emails. Um, and that's if we have questions. And it's okay to ask questions. And it's actually in our bylaws that we can ask. Which also means that it is implied in our bylaws that when we ask these questions, people are actually supposed to respond to us. And that's something that actually helps us do our, our job. Uh, it's pretty straightforward and we kind of talked about it already. Uh, but if there are any questions or clarifications, uh, because what you'll see is sometimes we'll ha, we'll talk about things. And it'll, you know, but these things, most of these things are actually really policies that are already written out that we should be following. Um, so, you know, trustee Smith Foles, do you have anything on that? Any questions?
No questions.
Mr. Christian?
Uh, no question.
Mr. Gonzalez Hoi?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Reckler?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. Duffy, do you want to unpack that? We talked about it already, but do you want to add anything to that one?
No, I think I'm okay. I mean, just, you know, know that we try to publish that agenda. Uh, obviously the Friday before the meeting, uh, by four o'clock. Um, so. You know, that's our, that's our deadline and our goal. Um, and we, we really do want, you know, from our staff, obviously, every single thing in. Thursday night at the latest. Um, but you know, we're a lot of times cranking away through Friday to get everything done. Which is tough because when you rush, as you know, you make mistakes. Um, and so, you know, we try to be done as best as possible. Um, so just, you know, so you all are aware of that cadence. You know, that, that's really it.
Thank you, uh, very much, Mr. Duffy, uh, for that. So again, we're moving, we were in the preparation section. Um, you know, preparing for the meeting. So, you know, the first thing that you need to do is reach your. Say it just, it sounds simple, right? But the first thing is really actually to read the agenda. What happens a lot of times, um, it doesn't happen here. Uh, but I know elected officials who go into meetings and they do not read their agenda. Uh, and then they ask a million questions. Um, and you know when the person didn't read the agenda? Because they're asking questions that are literally in the packet. So, uh, when you're doing that, people can tell that you didn't actually do your homework. Because a lot of the questions are, are, and answers are actually there. So reading the agenda and then if you have questions or need clarification, following up with staff. And then I know that trustee, and I'm just going to go to the bottom to make sure I don't miss anything. Okay. I did it. Um, the next bylaw that we're going to go to is. And again, these are the bylaws that were sent out or attached to the agenda, is ninety-two hundred. And we're still in preparing for the meeting, okay? And then we will have, um, I know trustee Reckler, you wanted to talk about some of the things that you do, uh, to prepare for the meeting. Uh, best practices, uh, that help you. Uh, and I'm sure other people do things to prepare for the meetings as well. I know I do. Uh, and so we can all kind of talk for a moment, uh, about what we do, uh, individually. Uh, because that might give each other ideas, right, on how to, um, to better prepare for meetings, okay? Okay, so, uh, this is board bylaw ninety-two hundred. Um, I'm going to scroll down to, uh. This section right here, obligations of members. Uh, and I'm going to stay in order of our, our group, so if he does not mind.
Two seventy.
Mr. Christian? Um. If you don't, if you don't mind, can you read? Uh. The highlighted part for obligations of members?
Um. It's in small, I mean, I can't enlarge it to.
Oh, it's okay. I, I, I'll do it. It's, it's okay. Uh, Mr. Gonzalez, are you going to do it?
I don't mind, President Phillips.
Okay.
Um, members of the board must endeavor to attend all meetings. Study all materials presented with the agenda prior to attending the meeting. Participate in the discussion of any items which come before the board and vote on all motions and resolutions. Abstaining only for compelling reasons.
Thank you very much. Um, there's a lot packed into that one sentence. Uh, so we're not at this point talking about extensions and all of that kind of stuff. We're really focusing on the preparation part. So, you know, another way that you do prepare, and sometimes people will miss meetings, that happens, right? Uh, everybody at some point will miss something. Uh, but by being at meetings, that is another way you prepare because it's like, you know, school, right? The thing that you learn today affects what comes at tomorrow, which affects what comes the day after that, right? So actually being present, um, in your meetings, uh, in your subcommittee meetings. And again, that issue of studying all materials presented with the agenda prior to the meeting. Um, those things are so, uh. Are so big and we are, by our bylaws, uh, required to do that. Uh, Mr. Duffy, do you have any comments on this? Okay, uh. Do any of the trustees have any comments on this, this section? Or questions on this section? Okay.
No, I did have a question, but it was about what you said we're not going to talk about. So we're not talking about extensions because that's where my question was about.
Abstention, so, um, well, you know what? I said that we were. Going to talk about some things that have come up in meetings, right? So let's take up the abstention one, uh, because I know that has come up. There's actually two bylaws, um, that I've seen that actually deal with extensions. Uh. You know what? Actually, we were in a way. Because one of the things we're going to talk about was conflict of interest, but it's right here too. So if you have a question right now, uh, instead of us just flipping back to this bylaw, then, then go ahead.
So my question is, it says that, um, abstaining only for compelling reasons. Does that reason need to be publicly disclosed? Or am I able to abstain just by saying I abstain? Or do I have to publicly disclose why I'm abstaining for a compelling reason, which is subjective? Compelling is subjective.
Right, so. There's two bylaws that I'm aware of that deal with this. So this is this one, right? And then there's another one that's around conflicts, um, and we are supposed to disclose conflicts. Uh, and so later on in this discussion, we'll get to, uh, to that part, and so you'll be able to see it. Um, but if you have a compelling reason to abstain and we're not talking about conflicts. Uh, there's nobody that's going to force you to say. You know, why are you abstaining? You, you know what I mean? Um, and also with, you know, one of the, um, items that is in the book that trustee Reckler gave us, right? So there may be times where you abstain. That don't have anything to do with a conflict of interest. You may abstain because you feel like you don't have enough information to take a vote. That's okay. Uh, and I know that people call in and harass board members. Uh, but there's nothing that prevents you from abstaining, for example, because you don't have enough information. And you're right, that bylaw that talks about compelling reasons, that is subjective. And, you know, it may be a compelling reason to you, you know? Uh, but again, like if we're talking about like an actual conflict, like a financial conflict, then yeah, you need to say that. And, um, there is a board bylaw that goes along with that, and that's going to come up later on, um, in this conversation.
Could I add something?
Yes, sir.
I mean, one of the things to remember about extensions though, is when, if somebody does abstain. That brings you to four board members. And if it's an action item that makes it, you know, tricky to. Have a majority, which I think is why the spirit of what's written is to try to have board members act. As much as you possibly can. But if you do need to abstain, I think, following everything trustee Phillips said is absolutely right.
Mr. Gonzalez Hoi?
Thank you. Um, so could I just have a reminder on the Rosenberg rules? If you abstain, that doesn't count as a no, right, when it comes to the final voting? I just wanted to confirm that because I get confused between sometimes Rosenberg's rules and Roberts' rules, and on Roberts' rules it does, so I just. If you wouldn't mind just refreshing me on that, I'd appreciate it.
So we are going to, Rosenberg's is on the list, and I'm sorry because you guys can't see the bullets, but it, it is on the list. And so when we get to Rosenberg's, um, because one of the things about Rosenberg's, and this is a suggestion that I have for all of you. Um, is that it's very short, you know, get familiar with it and bring it with you, right? Like literally have it with you. Uh, because sometimes in meetings, especially if you're not comfortable or familiar with, you know, rules of order. Uh, or, and particularly a lot of people are not familiar with Rosenberg's because everybody's so used to using Roberts. Um, just have it with you, you know? Go through it and highlight things that, you know, are important or significant for you. Uh, and that will give you more confidence because if sometimes you just have to look down and say, okay, what, I don't remember, what does it say? That's okay. That's really okay. Uh, I'll tell you this, um, I, I was admitted to the bar in two thousand and three. Um, and I have highlighted Rosenberg's. So it, it is nothing to be ashamed of. Um, I have a paper copy, uh. It's right here. Uh, you, you know what I mean? So that's, it's okay. And you can do the same thing, uh, but we will go to Rosenberg's, Mr. Gonzalez Hoi, um, and then we'll look at that exact language. Uh, so we're not paraphrasing it. Is that okay? Okay, um, does anybody else have anything, um, around that abs, that, that issue? I mean, because I know we kind of stopped with the abstention kind of thing, but. Okay. Um, and then, Mr. Gonzalez Hoi, can you do that last part?
Sure. Um, the board members should be prepared and willing to devote a sufficient amount of time to the study of the problems of education in the district. The state and the nation in order to interpret them to the public, to the people of the district.
Thank you. Um, and so this goes back to the preparation, so we know we're supposed to read our agenda. We know we're supposed to read the attachments. We know we have questions that we should follow up with staff. Um, staff knows that they should actually be responsive. Um, but here's the thing that, like, I think some people don't realize sometimes about running for school board, right? Because you see, uh, the board meetings. Um, and then I think a lot of times people just kind of think like that's it. And it's not. Like if you're really doing, you know, the work. It's going to take time outside of the meeting and sometimes significant time. Outside of the meeting. So we have this board bylaw that's saying, you know, hey, heads up. You know, you really do need to be spending sufficient time outside of the meeting. And sufficient is different for different people. Um, to get up to speed, um, on the issues that are in our district. Um, the issues that are in our state that affect our district. Um, and, you know, a great example of that, right, is the vaccine, right? Uh, we don't necessarily, we don't have any control over the distribution of the vaccine, but it's a state issue that affects our district. It affects our staff, right? Uh, it is, it, it, so I'm just using that as an example. Um, sometimes Dr. Wolf comes in and talks about things at the federal level. You know, we're talking about the Biden administration right now and how that affects us. All of those things give us context as board members for the decisions that we have to make. And the things that are spoken to, uh, that we speak about and that people present to us on. Um, I'm going to leave that at that, um, but does anyone have any questions? And we're going to have the conversation, trustee Reckler, that you were talking about. Uh, so we could all talk about different ways that we prepare, um, and then collectively, you know, give each other more tools. Uh, but does anybody have any questions about that last part? Okay, so, um, anybody that's not comfortable saying how they prepare for meetings, it's okay. Um, nobody's being forced to say anything here. Uh, but, uh, Mrs. Smith Foles, do you want to start, uh, by just sharing how you? How you prepare or have been preparing? I know this is new for everybody.
So what I did to prepare for meetings is. I continue to listen to the community, so I get emails and I answer those emails. I read those emails. I get phone calls. I try my best to answer those phone calls. I, um, really want to keep my feet grounded. So when I go to the dais, I'm speaking for the community, so that's big for me, is to keep the community connection. Looking at Facebook pages, looking at comments that people are making, looking at, um. Having my own relationship with the community and their ability to come talk to me as a trustee directly in a collective form. All of that helps me prepare for a meeting. All of that allows me the opportunity to make sure that I'm taking the voice of the community to the board. Um, I also write my questions down ahead of time. I try to, and then if they're answered, I kind of just check them off as I go through. And so when it comes to my time that I am conscious of the questions that need to be asked. I, in this, you know, almost fifth or sixth meeting, I'm trying to get better at reading the room. And reading what, if I can slip more discussion in during a question or if it's questions or so I'm trying to. Figure out how to navigate that. Um, I, after our last meeting, I actually, uh. Looked up how not to ask subset questions. I looked it up. Um, so I'm, I'm learning and I'm open to learning and I think that that helps me be prepared for every meeting. I've, I've, I'm sorry, one of the things I really do is I go back and I watch the board meetings. That's the biggest thing that I do. I go back and watch the board meetings. I go back and watch the special meetings. I go back and if it's Facebook Live, I go back and I read the comments under that when I re-watch it. So for me, I stay grounded to the community by having opportunities for them to talk to me and I go back and I review the. I review not only the agendas, but also review the entire meeting. And I'm doing that as a way of being self-reflective and not critical of anyone else, but self-reflective on how I can be better at the next meeting. Thank you.
That was great. Um, trustee Christian, do you want to talk about what you do?
Yes, thank you, uh, President, uh, Phillips. Um, I'm in a learning process and, um, and even by this today of really. Um, putting everything in its proper context. So, but basically, um, with the agenda that comes out. Um, and I'm trying to go through the agenda, skim through it, try to, you know, look at the, the various, uh. Uh, areas of the agenda and so I could stay in touch with everything, uh, pretty much. And then, um, I would echo the same thing with, uh, trustees, uh, Jamila Smith Foles, as mentioned, is. Uh, staying and, uh, con, connected with the community, um. You know, in listening to the voices and, and, and. To the voices and 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 based on that is is it. It 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 sort of helps me out. So, but like I said, I'm still in the learning process. I'm trying to pull, put everything together. Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir. And you know what? We're all learning, and we're learning from each other right now, which is why we're doing that, this. Um, so that's, that's, that's just fine. Uh, next, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, President Phillips. You know, I don't think I do anything different than what trustee Christian and trustee Smith Folds do. So I appreciated them going first because I I do a very similar process. Um, and the only thing that I think I would add that they probably do themselves as well is. Um, if I see an issue around bilingual education, I I try to reach out to. A bilingual teacher or a bilingual parent to, that are in the program to just give me context. Um, if I can, I know it's, it's hard sometimes because a lot of us, most of us, uh, you know, have. Committees and and job on top of everything, but, um, and family, I don't know what those, what that is, but. Um, you know, so, so I think it's hard, but but that's maybe one additional thing I would, I would have.
Thank you, uh, so much. Uh, trustee Reckler?
Yeah, I don't have much to add. Uh, I've been doing a lot of the same things that trustee Smith Folds has been doing, including looking at the meetings to figure out. You know, did I, did I ask the best possible question? And learning from that and listening to other trustees' questions and trying to really, you know, learn, you know, learn and do some reflection. I've also, um, so that, that was very, that that was excellent. I, you know, I'm very goal-oriented. And I always try to begin with the end in mind, so I'm setting up goals and then I'm backing down into what I need to accomplish. And how I need to accomplish them. And I'm really only concentrating on three big things. Out of all of this. What's the, what's gonna move us forward? What are those three humongous things? And try and not get caught up in the details of of whether it really matters at the end of the day. So I always try to keep that in mind. And then I also try to do outreach to people outside of our district. Um, to get perspective. Um, because we, you know, we can fishbowl and it could be very isolated, and I do try to access my wider mentoring circle. And my wider contacts just to bounce ideas off, to, you know, listen to different districts, learn from from different. Board members and people who have different perspectives. So that's, that's the prep for a meeting. Preparing to give a meeting is a different. Uh, is a little bit different, but, uh, it it basically follows the same thing. But I think, and then I write up questions, and then you guys all ask all of my questions. And then at the end, I say, no further questions, because you've asked my questions, and then I'm done.
Thank you. Uh, thank you. Uh, I I do. A lot of what you guys said, uh, already. And the good thing, right, about hearing what other people are doing is you're like, okay, I was doing this right, or what, you know what I mean? So it's, it it puts things in context, but, you know, I read the agenda, I read, uh. The attachments, uh, I send emails, uh, to staff, uh, when I have questions. Uh, when those questions are, uh. Answered, I'm I'm fine. Uh, when they're not answered, you know, I usually double back. And ask them in open meetings. I reach out to people who, I'm reading this, this book, or rereading this book. And it talks about, uh, it's a leadership book. And one of the things that they say about leaders is that leaders are constantly seeking the truth, right? So all of you are are leaders. Um, everybody on this call is a leader. Um, and so part of seeking the truth, right, is like, how do you, how do you do that, right? And that means that you're seeking multiple sources of information, right? Staff. Uh, part of their job is to give us information, but, you know, like Mr. Duffy said earlier, you don't know what you don't know, right? And so, um, they may not know something, or they may not be aware of something, right? So you're constantly seeking multiple sources of information, whether that means, like Mr. Gonzalez Hoy said. Talking to a teacher, uh, whether that means talking to a parent, uh. I'm not telling. I won't tell this story, because when I made that last analogy at the study session, people are like, you shouldn't have did this. So I'm not gonna tell this story, because this is another goofy one. Uh, but, uh, I remember when we were talking about Mandarin last year. Um, and whether Mandarin should go to Helms. I drove up there, right? Got out of my car and literally walked the site, you know, to picture where everything would be, you know? So sometimes I will literally go to sites to see for myself. Uh, and we're in a different environment right now, so, you know, you're not necessarily doing that, right? But I'm just speaking in general terms to see for myself, kind of, you know, what's going on, whether that's something with the building. You know, whether that's something with classrooms. All of you need to know that as board members, you have the. Uh, ability to go visit sites. You don't have the ability to go teach the classes or anything like that, but you do have the ability to go. And to visit sites and visit classrooms and 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 observe, uh, without disrupting. Uh, you know, so those are things that you do to to seek truth, right? Uh, most of you know that I am constantly on social media, having conversations with people. Uh, which includes all kinds of people, uh, you know, in our community, from staff to parents, sometimes to students. Uh, you know, that's something I I do. Prior to. Us going into this, you know, this pandemic, I held weekly meetings, and I still do it. It's just different. But I literally would hold weekly meetings downtown, uh, where I would meet with, you know, parents and staff. Uh, some of you have seen me downtown, uh, you know, doing that. So that's another way that you, you know, you can constantly seek truth, uh, because at the end of the day. There are some real complex, uh, I sometimes I will call older, I shouldn't say older. Uh, that was wrong. Um, I'm, I meant former. Sometimes I will call former board members, right? Folks who are on the board longer, uh, you know, than myself and say, hey, I know that you dealt with this in. Whatever year it was, you know, what is your, you know, your opinion about this? Uh, you know, it it is, uh, there is nothing wrong with, uh, asking. Uh, we should all ask and and have the humility to ask because it makes us, uh, better. Not weaker. I mean, those are, I will do independent research sometimes, so I'll get an agenda item. Uh, and it'll talk about. X, right, whatever X is, right? And I feel like, you know, X is a really complex issue. Um, I do this a lot when we're talking about like ed code stuff and, you know, statutory stuff and contract stuff. I mean, I'll go independently and and look stuff up, uh, just to round out, you know, my information. So I, you know, those, I didn't write anything down for this, but I mean, those are just kind of like off the top of my head. You know, some of the things that I do, uh, you know, to prepare, uh, for meetings. Sometimes I will call, you know, and as you build relationships with board members in other areas, you know, sometimes you will do that as well. Um, so you you'll talk to trustees and whatever unified school district it is, as you develop relationships with. Council members, right? So if there's an issue that is in, uh, say, the city of El Cerrito. You know, you, you will have a relationship with, you know. Gabe Quinto, for example, or other people that are on the board, and it's okay for you guys to have conversations. Uh, you know, it's okay for you to have conversations with people on Penole City Council or. San Pablo City Council are, those are your, are your peers, right? And you're serving the same population, um, and sometimes they will see things differently than you. Sometimes you will see things differently than them, but the dialogue, uh, is really helpful because sometimes there is. There's significant overlap. Uh, so those are some of the things that come to my mind, uh, on preparation. Mr. Duffy, do you have, you know, any thoughts about, you know, I know you've worked with board members before even coming here. But do you have any thoughts on, um, what board members can do to prepare for, uh, meetings?
You guys have covered a lot, um, that you can do. I would just actually, um. Make a comment about another kind of preparation, which is mental preparation. It's a really intense meeting, and, you know, getting your mind right for that meeting is really important. I find. Personally, if I have to work right up till five o'clock, and I've been going since eight AM and maybe all night before. I'm not maybe mentally as fresh as I'd like to be, so I really try to protect that hour before the board meeting. To just like decompress, go for a walk, do something. You know, so I just encourage that side of preparation also. There's all of the technical preparation, but. You know, especially if you know you're gonna have to make a big vote that night on something. Um, to just, you know, be in the best mindset that you can be.
That's really helpful, uh, and it's a great point. Yes, ma'am.
Phillips, I'm so happy that Superintendent Duffy brought that up, because self-care is so important. I know for me, after a Wednesday board meeting, Thursday, I'm done. I'm spent. Like, I just, I can't do anything. Uh, Thursday, and I know that I have the privilege, I'm sitting in a seat of privilege to be able to say that, but that's. It's one of those things that I have, that's part of my self-care. Part of the pre-planning for these meetings is meal planning. It's something that my husband can warm up, so he can take care of the girls and they can eat at the same time at night, because I'm gonna be sitting here. So I think that it's a lot of, um. Self-care that we need to make sure that we're doing and care to our, to the public that's watching us. I think that that's one of the values of having the, having the breaks in the meeting. And I think that we just need to keep having those conversations about caring, not only for ourselves, but not only for our families, but for those people who are watching us also. And participating.
Amen, amen. Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm also glad, uh, Superintendent Duffy mentioned this, you know. I got, um, sometimes, like, you'll know I work and like my job, sometimes long hours during the day. Um, and I, um, there was a, a, I don't know if a study session or a board meeting, like, I worked until the board, until closed session. And I was eating during a board meeting, because I felt like I didn't want to be disrespectful and leave the, you know, the dais as. And, um, I got an email from a person, the public, saying like, oh, it's gross watching you eat. And I was like, okay. So I think that like there has to be also some understanding and and, um. Some, uh, grace from everybody, right? Each other, the public, like, staff, all of us. To understand that, like, we're trying to serve as best we can. And if sometimes, like, we're eating a burger and video, like, I I bet it's gross to watch me eat. But like, that's the only time we have, right? So like, I think it has to be okay to just share with each other and give each other grace, like. Yes, it's okay to step away to go to the bathroom. Yes, it's okay to eat. Yes, it's okay to like. I mean, of course, I'm not gonna have wine, right? But like, yes, it's okay to like, do these things and like, have understanding that, like, we're all coming from a good place. Um, and continue leading from empathy and love and courage, right? So just want to make sure we put that out there, because if I felt like. If I, after that, I was like, I'm not gonna eat again. And I was like, no, wait a second, like, I should be able to, right? And I think that I just want to put out there, so we're all okay with each other doing things like that.
So let me chime in on this, because there's something that I wanted to say, um, and I haven't had an opportunity to say it, right? So sometimes it's not, um. I cannot, uh, obviously, I cannot stop anybody, you know, any of the board members from, you know, sitting at the camera, eating their dinner. Uh, but. I really don't want to have, and I'm gonna, there's two things that I'm saying, so wait for the second part too, right? Uh, so, but I really don't want to have, you know. Staff sitting in the camera eating. That said. In a normal environment, and you guys wouldn't know this, and I've been meaning to say it, right? But in a normal environment, when we're in closed session, we would be eating. So normally what happens is there's dinner that's catered for everybody. So the board members, staff, and I've just been meaning to say this. Um, and Mr. Duffy is kind of the only other person that would have context for this, right? Um, but you guys can eat in closed session. So that period of time, and that's what would happen normally, right? So when we get to the. Closed session, right? And it's just like, it's literally just us. Like, if we were literally together, we would all be sitting in front of each other eating. And there's not really any reason why. We can't do that now. Um, and I just haven't said it, and I I'm sorry, and I'm just trying to give you context for it. So, Mr. Gonzalez, boy, there actually is supposed to be a space that's carved out. For you to actually come in and decompress and actually eat your food. Uh, you know, and and I know that, uh, trustee Smith Folds has talked about, you know, having to go so long without being able to eat. For example, uh, yes, bring your dinner to closed session. Uh, it's not, Mr. Duffy, bring your dinner to closed session. Because that's what we would be doing normally. Uh, and I'm sorry that I did not say that to you earlier. But that's part of. Guess that's why we needed to do this, this meeting right now. Um, does that make sense, what I'm saying?
Yes, and it would, that's great that we know now, because as a diabetic, it's it's rough. Because you have to have times that you eat and times that you take the pill and then you eat. So I appreciate knowing that that's a space, a designated appropriate space for us to be able to eat, because it helps me plan. My household meals, it helps me plan my individual meals, and it helps me able to stay completely. Uh, focused and engaged, because that's what food does. It gives us energy for us to stay focused and engaged. So I do appreciate knowing that. Thank you.
No, no problem. And I see, I see, Mr. Duffy, and just really quick, right? In addition to that, right, we're gonna try to keep doing our, we're gonna keep doing breaks. Please remember that for us to have the breaks, though. We, we can't get bogged down. We have to be moving through our items, but we're gonna continue to have breaks. Uh, we're, you know, tightening up our meeting time, you know, but you should not be sitting. In a meeting that starts at four o'clock. And then you don't get to eat again until eleven thirty, right? So basically, there is space that is ho- a set aside for you to be eating essentially all the way up till six thirty, right? Uh, and then, you know, we built in a break, and then we're not trying to stay until one o'clock in the morning. So I'm gonna let that go, but I hope that was helpful information. Mr. Gonzalez Hoi, thank you for giving me the space to actually say that, because I've been meaning to tell you guys, you can actually eat. All through closed session, and that's what we normally do. Um, Mr. Duffy?
Just maybe this is for the next section that in, when we do the in-meeting, because I think that's where we're getting to, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to put a pin in the chat function of Zoom. Which we should probably talk about, because we, we don't really use that, and it's a tool. You know, we might want to use more where somebody can say, be right back, or I'm going off-screen for a minute to like. Grab a bite or get a drink, you know, just so folks know that. So we haven't really used that, and we should maybe find a minute to talk about how we want to use that. Because normally on the dais, we'd be like passing notes kind of thing. Uh, so we have this tool to try to figure out, you know, some in-meeting communication.
If we can take, Mr. Duffy, and I'm only saying this for kind of like. Brown Act stuff, right? Um, so we can kind of maybe take that loop back later, but just kind of take that conversation off offline. Um, but like going back to what Mr. Duffy was just saying right now, so like also in a normal meeting, right? If you had to get up, and it's crazy, right, because we're in Zoom, and like you just see everybody's faces, and like you're literally like zeroed in on people. So it's very obvious if you get up to walk away, you will feel, maybe feel uncomfortable. In a normal meeting, like, if you needed to get up and use the bathroom, like, you would just get up. I mean, there's like, eh, you would just get up. So like, you shouldn't feel like, I mean, yeah, you want to stay in the meeting as long as you can. And, you know. But if you have to get up, like, it's okay. That's what would happen in a normal meeting. So you don't, you don't have to. Feel uncomfortable. You can excuse yourself, you know, and, and just, you know, get back as soon as, as you can if you have to use bathroom or something. Does that make sense, everybody? You know, so, yeah, so to the extent that we can. It's not a normal meeting because we're in Zoom, but that doesn't mean that everything has to be completely different. So, okay, so we're gonna go to. We're gonna do the next one, which is we're gonna leave this, and we're gonna move. Into the day of the meeting, alright? So we've set the agenda, we're all prepared and ready to go. And we show up at the meeting. So the first thing that we're gonna talk about. Are roles, and then we're specifically the board president and the clerk, right? So you begin to have some context. Of why I'm doing some of the things that I'm doing in the meetings. So. We'll start with board bylaw ninety-one twenty-one. And trustee Reckler, do you mind taking this one? When I get it.
Sure, go right ahead if you could pull that up for me.
Okay.
Great. So ninety-one twenty-one. The president, well, we've elected our president, and the president shall preside at all board meetings, he, she, shall. And we probably need to up that to, update that to they too. I'll save that comment for the end. Call the meeting to order at the appointed time, announce the business to come before the board in its proper order. Enforce the board's policies relating to the conduct of meetings and help ensure compliance with applicable requirements of the Brown Act. Recognize persons who desire to speak and protect the speaker who has the floor from disturbance or interference. Explain what the effect of a motion would be if it's not clear to every member. Restrict discussion to the question when a motion is before the board. Rules on issues of parliamentary procedure, puts motions to a vote, and state clearly the results of the vote. And be responsible for the orderly conduct of all board meetings.
Thank you. And I'm, I'm gonna, and this goes back to what I was saying earlier, that our bylaws are a little fragmented. Because there are things in different spaces. But you'll see that number two down there, consulting with the superintendent or designated on the preparation of the board's agenda, right? That's from the agenda setting. And then three, you know, working with the superintendent to ensure that board members have necessary materials and information. So. Which goes back to the preparation discussion that we just had. So part of my job as well is to. Help make sure you guys have the things that you need. And that's part of the reason that I do the check-ins, right? So the things. So anyway. So I just wanted to bring those in because I think they give some context to some of the things that you see me doing. But what I wanna do is, you know, some of these are very straightforward, like call the meeting to order at time. But does anybody have, like, any questions about? I'll, I'll highlight some of these, but does anybody have any questions about anything on this list? Or just anyone need clarification? About anything that they see here, and then I could try to put it into context for you. Okay, well, I wanna highlight just a couple of things. I wanna highlight number three. So number three, enforce the board's policies relating to the conduct of the meeting. And help ensure compliance with applicable requirements of the Brown Act. So even in this meeting that we're having right now, I've, you know, I've been bringing up the Brown Act, right? And in our normal meetings. You know, I can be somewhat of a, maybe not somewhat, but be a stickler about like procedures and whatnot. That's not just me being a butt. That is me trying to enforce the board's policies. And then also, like, if you look at number nine. Well, not just number nine, number seven, rule on issues of parliamentary procedure. So, and we'll get to Rosenberg's later. But one of the things around the procedures is, and this is why I'm also encouraging everybody to read the procedures. And to highlight it and to make notes, because if we're, it's like a basketball game, right? It's like a game. So like if we all go to play basketball. And none of us know the rules, right? Like, we're all doing something different, right? And we're bumping up against each other or whatnot. Because none of us know the rules, right? Or maybe a couple of us know the rules and a couple of us don't. And then people are put at a disadvantage because they don't know the rules, right? And so. That's why it's really important, and like when we talk about people wanting to be more effective, you know, as board members. It's extremely important that we take the time to learn our rules, the rules that are in our bylaws. And the rules that are in, in Rosenberg's because it will make everybody better, more effective representatives for their wards. And then it will drive kind of the interaction that we have because we all know. Know the rules. And if there's something that I do, that's procedurally incorrect, and we'll talk about this later. But if there's something that I do that's procedurally incorrect, there are ways to, you know, raise points of order. And we'll talk about this stuff to, to get my attention, right? But ultimately, under our bylaws and under Rosenberg's, the chair of the meeting, which is the president, rules on the issues. So if I'm making this up, if trustee X says, you know. Point of order, and I say, please state your point of order, and then trustee X says Y. And I shouldn't have said Y because that means like there could be a question. Trustee X says Z, right? At that point, like the chair. Can rule or will rule on the decision, right? And if the chair rules. In favor of the decision agrees with the point of order, the chair changes and does something differently. If the chair does not agree with the point of order, that's okay. But like, but that's it. And let, under the rules, that's it. And this is just making sure that everybody's playing by the same rules. And we'll get to this later unless, right? And if the, the person, the trustee feels very strongly about it. You know, the trustee has the ability to appeal, which we'll talk about later, to appeal the decision of the chair. And then the body as a whole can overrule the chair if it wants. But unless there's an appeal. Then that's really it. And we all just have to honestly follow the rules. And what ends up happening. Is when you see boards getting into arguments and fights and all of that kind of stuff, is when they're not following the rules. Because the rules are set up in a way to avoid all of that. And to the extent that I could help you work through these. I am happy to do that because if we're all know the rules and are playing by the same rules, it will be a much more enjoyable experience for everybody, including me. And so then number nine is the other thing I wanted to highlight. Be responsible for the orderly conduct of all board meetings. So again. You know, when I'm being a stickler or whatnot, it's not me being, trying to be a butt, you know, it's me trying to do the things that I'm. Obligated to do under our bylaws. This is a free time. Don't feel uncomfortable. If you have any questions about this set of bylaws. Please ask, and I will answer the question. I'm totally open on this. Okay. There doesn't seem to be any questions. So we'll go to the next one, okay? So the next one is ninety-one twenty-three, and ninety-one twenty-three is the board bylaw that deals with the clerk. And I'm not quite sure who read this last time, who read last time. Okay, ah, then it's perfect. It's right back on, it's on the clerk. So, Madam Clerk, do you wanna read? These highlights, that's not a lot, but the highlighted sections.
Sure. The duties of the clerk shall be, serve as presiding officer at the discretion of the president and with the consent of the clerk or in the absence of the president. Support the president to run timely and effective Board of Education meetings.
Thank you so much. So. The clerk has multiple. Roles, but the two biggest roles for the meetings are, one, if I. And I'm saying, I'm not even gonna say I because it could be anybody, right? So if the chair is not there, the president is not there, the clerk presides over the meeting. And then the other one is the clerk's position is to support the president in running timely and effective. Board of Education meetings, right? So. That means a couple of things, right? That means that the clerk should be modeling, should know the rules as well because like if the clerk has to run the meetings. Like if the president is not there, that means the clerk needs to know the rules. The clerk needs to know the bylaws. The clerk needs to be comfortable with Rosenberg's, right? It also means in supporting the running of a timely and effective board meeting, it also means the clerk needs to follow the rules theirself, right? You know, you can't be, the president of the board can't preside and not follow the rules. The clerk can't be there and not follow the rules either. Yeah, so I just wanted to talk about these roles because, you know, those really are the two spots that are kind of leading us through. Leading us through these meetings. Very incidentally, I wanna say another thing, I wanna just like divert a little bit. All of you are committee chairs. And so the things that you see that I'm going over right now, as far as like, these are the roles of the president, right? Those are the things that you need to be doing in your committees, right? Because there you are the chair. I'm not. You are, right? So all of those duties that we just went over, you know, with the president, you kind of need to internalize that. Because that really is the role that you play as the chair. As far as conducting decent and orderly meetings, you know, as far as making sure that the board policies are being followed. As far as making sure that we're using Rosenberg's because the truth is that is the adopted rule of procedure for our meetings. So just, you know, I'm not in all of the meetings because I'm on two subcommittees, just like everybody else, but that meeting. Really is a mini board meeting. And when you're in that space. You're me. I mean, meaning you are the presiding officer of that meeting. Does that make sense? Okay, does anybody have any questions about the role of the clerk?
I don't have a question. I just wanted to be clear that this is my first time being clerk, first time board member, first time being a clerk. So my personality may come off a little. I don't know, whatever adjective you wanna fill in the word with, but I am, I am highly. Mindful of my professionalism as a teacher, but at the same time, those. I'm also very mindful of that I do have my own personality. Like I do have a personality, but I am, I just wanted to let all my colleagues know that. I, I do take this role very seriously. I am professional about it, and I'm trying to be the best version of myself that I can be. And that comes with learning, relearning and unlearning and practice. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Does, for that, and I appreciate that. And we're all learning. Every single person here. Does anybody have, just wanna double back, does anybody have any questions about this, this spot? Okay, and, and just remember, like, at some point, you know, everybody. Everybody is in a, not at some point, right now, everybody is in a leadership role in some capacity. Because we have all these committees that we're, you know, working out of right now. So, you know. When you are, be, be the trustee that you wanna have. I guess that's what I'm gonna say, right? So like if you are chairing a committee, and this is for you now, or this is for you when you become, you know, a different position, when you become board president or clerk. You know, be the trustee that you wanna have sitting next to you, right? So if you're sitting in a subcommittee meeting and you're chairing it, right? That person who is sitting next to you, how do you want them to relate to you, right? However, that is, and I guess it's just the golden rule is what I'm saying, right? However, that is, be that way with other people. Because even if. You know, it doesn't work, or it's not, you know, the fit isn't exactly the way, you know, you want it to be. You know, as long as you're treating other people the way that you want to be treated. Then, you know, at least if it's a mistake, you know, it's, 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 you know, it's your head, not your heart. You, you know what I mean? So I'm gonna leave that alone because I'm starting to beat a dead horse, but. Those are the roles of the clerk in the meeting, because this is, again, we're in the meeting. So the next thing we're gonna go to is decorum. And basically, we're talking about how we should be governing ourselves in the meeting, how we should be moderating ourselves in the meeting. As a board member. I do see, it's almost eleven thirty. You guys wanna take a break? Okay, you guys wanna take a ten-minute break and come back at, I guess, twelve minutes, come back at eleven forty? Okay, we'll be back at eleven forty. Can I have a motion? A motion to recess.
I was already running out.
Sorry, I went too fast. Sorry, 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 sorry.
I did the same thing.
It's cool. Can I have a motion to recess for until eleven forty?
So moved.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Trustee Smith Foles.
Yes.
Trustee Christian.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Hoi.
Yes.
And trustee Reckler.
Or yes.
Phillips, yes, we're on recess till eleven forty. Thank you, everybody. Okay. We're gonna wait a little bit for Mr. Duffy. And then we're gonna move on to decorum. Are you guys finding this helpful?
I need one minute. You can go ahead and start without me. I'll be back in one.
Okay, okay. All right, so we're gonna start with decorum, uh, and there are, uh, two bylaws that I want to highlight for us, and the first one is Board Bylaw ninety-ten. What did I just do? Okay, here we go. Uh. Trustee Christian, uh, do you want to do this one, or this is too small for you, right?
Yes, I can, uh, yes, I can do that.
Okay, okay.
Uh, the governing board recognizes the right of the board members to freely express their views and encourages open discussion of issues during the board meeting. The board believes that affected board members have a responsibility to express themselves, whether in agreement or disagreement with the board majority in ways that promote the board, the board's ability to govern the district.
Thank you very much, sir. Uh, basically, everybody on this board, um, and you'll hear me say this privately, publicly, everybody on this board was elected, uh, by the people in their work. Those people sent you to this board to represent them. And you cannot represent them if you don't talk. Uh, or let me put it this way, it will be very hard to represent them if you don't talk, right? Sometimes there will be issues, uh, that you disagree with other board members on, and that's okay. Uh, and this board bylaw is basically, or this section of the bylaw anyway, is, is basically saying that it is okay. Uh, but there's a way that we should do things. And that we should do, uh, and there's a way that we should treat each other, right? Uh, I can disagree with you. You could disagree with me without getting personal, without disrespecting people, without yelling at people, all the kinds of things that, you know, happen in, you know, crazy meetings and have happened. You know, and this is not specific to WCCUSD, because you could, I've seen meetings where board members start throwing punches, right? Uh, just craziness. Uh, and so this is about us being able to work together and have disagreements, but still be agreeable, right? Uh, it's pretty straightforward, but does anybody have any questions about this bylaw? Okay. Uh. But I, I just really want to make sure that it's clear to everybody, it's okay to disagree. Uh, it really is, you know, it's just how we do it. So, uh, that said, we're gonna go to the next one, which is ninety-two hundred. And this is, uh, limits of board members authority. This is a long bylaw, but there's really only a certain part out of it that I want to, uh, take. And we have talked about this bylaw already, but if you see between those two highlighted, uh, paragraphs, there's another sentence there that I really should have, uh, you know, emphasized, but it, I didn't, I didn't highlight it, I'm sorry. Uh, but can somebody read that to us? And I think this one is extremely important for multiple reasons, uh, that have been touched on in this meeting. Uh, but can somebody take that one for me, please?
Sure, I'm happy to. It's the one in the middle, the, the, in the sandwich.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the board member should not subordinate the education of children and youth to any partisan principle, group interest, or the member's own personal interests.
Um, I want us to, I mean, this one is, I mean, they're all important, right? But this one is extremely important, um, because this talks, it's, it does deal with decorum, but it really talks about kind of that guiding light, that North Star, um, when we're up there making decisions, uh, and, you know, who's first? Uh, and that that's kids, right? Children and youth, uh, that is before everything, and we all have, you know, alliances, we all have personal opinions, we all have connections. Uh, all that secondary. Uh, and it can be difficult in the moment to remember that sometimes, but we have to. And so I'm just gonna stop for a minute, um, and I would like to hear from just like each one of you, like what this particular section that we just read, uh, means to you, uh, because this one is like dead center bullseye, um, on why we are here. So, uh, Trustee Smith Folds?
Um. It means to serve. I was elected to serve. When you serve, you serve everyone. You don't just serve those people who have their hand up or who are. It's just service. It's, I've come from a background of service, uh, you know, from serving in the church when you were a kid to serving, I worked at a restaurant as a waitress. Service is highly important. It's a value that goes beyond what you can give people. It's how you treat people. It's how people feel when you leave the room. Um, so for me, when I'm sitting at the dais, I want to be sitting in a seat of service. It's a privilege to be there. It's a privilege to carry the voice of children to the dais. It's a privilege to carry the voice of the community to the dais, and that's everyone, whether they voted for me or not. That's whether they're in my district or my area or not, it's serving. So for me, this is just keeping the focus on the service, and the way that I do that is I stick to my four agreements. I try to do my best. I try not to take things personal. I try not to make assumptions. I try to, um, let my word be my bond. And I believe that was all four, and I try to be open and honest as possible, and that comes off a lot of different ways, but I've always been of the mindset, you know what you're getting when you get me. You don't even have to Google it. The way I walk into the room is the way that I am. So for me, again, to answer your question, this is all about service. It's, it's really service minded. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Trustee Christian, what is that?
Yes, uh, yes, thank you, uh, President Phillips. Uh, what it means is, number one is not to have, uh, a personal, um, uh, other words, your personal agenda, um, and, and it goes to serving, just like Trustee, uh, Jamila Smith Folds had mentioned, it's about serving, um, the community, um, and making sure, um, that you're not, uh, this is your little pet pee, um, and basically, uh, you, you, you doing stuff just for you, no, you, it's about, it's about our kids, it's about the teachers, it's about the community at large, it's about everybody. And, and you're there to make a difference and, and so forth. So, but your agenda, your having personal interest of the things you trying to do, no, it's about serving the community, and that's pretty much, thank you.
Trustee Gonzalez Hoi?
Thank you. You know, I think that, um, Trustee Smith Folds and Trustee Christian just said it so eloquently and beautifully. I, you know, I don't think I have much more to add. Uh, I agree with what both this, both them said. Um, except the only thing I would say is that like, you know, we all deal with so many complex and difficult issues, um, that come in front of us, uh, and will continue to come in front of us, and, um, sometimes community groups or outside groups, uh, or whatever, like, don't always understand why we do something. And I think that, um, it's important to know that, like, we see so many perspectives and hear so much from so many places. It's important to know that like we see so many perspectives and hear so much from so many places. Um, and doesn't always come across at the board at a board meeting, right, as of why we're doing something. And um, I'm learning on how to express. Uh, it within the board meeting and outside the board meeting. Uh, specifically, this piece about being student centered, but then also why I'm doing something outside and inside. So, that's something I'm still learning, and I wanted to express, but I agree with everything that's been stated.
Thank you, and I I like that that word, I wanna bring it back, right? Student center. That part that you said right there, cuz that's really student center. Trustee Reckler.
As well, I don't really have much to add, I think everybody has expressed. Uh, you know, views very eloquently, and it's to keep children at the center um of of everything we do.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I just say that one of the things that I think that we do well as a board? We don't come to the dais with fireworks, but it doesn't mean that we're not having fiery conversations. I think the reason why the board looks different than what it looked before is because we all make a conscious decision to. Have civility, and I'm not making a comment about before, but I'm saying this board has made a conscious decision to have civility. When we come in front of the public because of this middle sentence. Because we are not going to put kids on the background so we can argue in front of everyone. Or we can have conversations in front of everyone, or because we can do things in public. So I think that I just want everyone who's out there to understand. When you see us having calm conversations and discussion and and being joyful with each other or laughing with each other. It's because we're choosing to put that relationship for first, we're choosing to speak to each other and to treat each other. With a different level of civility that we all campaigned on, all of us campaigned on that. We all campaigned on putting kids first, putting the agendas back and just doing the best for the kids. Well, that means that you have to be able to hear what you don't wanna hear, the way that you may not wanna hear it. And still be okay to do the work and not have to always come back and say, well, you hurt my feelings, or you did this in the middle of a meeting. So it's conscious intentional effort that all five of us are doing to keep the principle of this middle sentence. I just wanna make sure that that's known out there and that we we are making decisions to do that.
I wholeheartedly agree with that, you know, it's up to us how we wanna present and how we wanna. Interact, and I hear learn and share, and that is the core of my being.
Amen, thank you. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave that one alone. Uh, but Mr. Duffy, we're under the decorum section right now, and I wanna go back up. Because um ninety ten, and we're not in ninety ten, so I need to get back to ninety ten. Uh, ninety ten, ninety ten, ninety ten, here we go. Um, so, um, we had a discussion, Mr. Duffy, when you had stepped away about. Individual board members' rights to express themselves and that it's okay to disagree with the majority. Uh, but that there's a way to do things. Uh, and that even when we disagree as a group, whether it's the majority or not, um, even if you're in the majority, you know. You don't have to, you know. Beat people over the head with the fact that you're in the majority, right? But there's a way to do things, um, and there's a way to disagree and still be dis uh still be agreeable, right? Um, and around treating each other the way we wanna be treated. Um, I just wanted you to just stop for a moment, Mr. Duffy, and talk to us about. As a member of the staff, right? And then as the staff member that is actually closest to the board, what effect does? Uncivility. Uh, and 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 in five, just when a board is not functioning in a way. That um is conducive to. Any, what effect does it have on staff? You get what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, I get what you're trying to say.
Well, I'm saying it, but 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 go ahead, I'm sorry.
I I can't probably um. Express deeply enough how. How dismayed the staff becomes from a dysfunctional board meeting. It's like. This staff works so hard for this organization. There's people who literally this, they've given their entire life to this place. And. The board members who ultimately represent the district. Are yelling at each other, walking off stage, being completely dysfunctional. It's really, it's embarrassing uh when that stuff happens, and then. The staff, instead of focusing on the work at hand, is focusing on like, alright. How do we help clean that up? Let's talk about damage control, what needs to happen here, right? So you end up doing work that you don't wanna be doing uh anyway, so. I mean, I I think it it has such a huge effect um. On cascading down because part your identity is being part of this organization. And you wanna be part of something that feels really positive and professional and forward moving and efficient. Um, so I would say, you know, that has a huge impact. Yeah, I'll just, I'll leave it there.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy, uh, that is very helpful. He left it there, but if anybody wants to. Ask him a question, uh, I'm sure he would, you know, answer the the question, does anybody have a question for him around this? If not, if you just wants to leave it there, I'll take that back, but um. But I just, I I think that this is just extremely important, that's why we're doubling back, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, I mean, I think that part of all this is also continued to getting to know each other. And, you know, Mr. Duffy, I want you to know a little bit, you and I have worked so much in the last few years, and I think you know this already. But you know, there's other staff that haven't worked with me in this capacity and um. Something I've been wanting to express about. One of the things I've I never, I have not liked about passports has been chastising. Or criticizing staff from the dais when conversations might have not happened before. Um, the way that I hope to lead, and I I I would love to hear from my colleagues too, is from a place of. I have a post-it on my computer that says lead with love, courage, and curiosity. And um, whenever hard issues come up, uh, and I'm curious about it, like, I plan on. Re- requesting information or reaching out to staff before, right? But if something doesn't come up or doesn't, um, uh, staff doesn't follow up with me. Or, you know, uh, you know, I'm not respecting me or whatever, like, then that's something that I'll bring to the board meeting. But I'll never lead from that place right away at a board meeting, does that make sense? Like, I I I'm not going to lead first through criticism, I'm gonna lead first through curiosity and empathy. Then I'll lead through it if there's no follow through or follow up. Um, and I think it's important for me to say that because I, I don't want people to mistake my my love and curiosity. As not wanting accountability um and transparency. But it's important to to know that there's levels, I think, right? Like, I'm never going to directly just go to criticism, right? And because I also believe deeply in protecting our staff because of what you just said, right? Because I do think that it also trickles down. If we lead with criticism, right? It also leads down to the sides, and that's not the example that I ever hope to to put forward. But but I do, I think, expect a level of follow up and and follow through prior to that. I hope that comes through, and I'm not, and I'm making a little sense, um, and that it fits within this.
I would just like to piggyback on what trustee Gonzalez Hoy said, we have a culture, we have a culture of fear in our district. And I do not wanna be one that perpetuates that culture of fear, I wanna be one that. Brings out the light and not the darkness, and one that makes sure that through transparency and honesty. And and heads up and protecting and not only protecting. It's not protection in a way, I'm gonna protect you cuz you're doing something wrong, it's, I'm gonna protect, I'm gonna protect. The purpose and the position that we're in and the the purpose for being here. So for me, I'm not going to tear anyone down in public because that's not purpose filled. It doesn't move things forward, but that doesn't mean that I don't have the transparent and honest conversations. In the light with that person. You're never gonna hear something that I said about you that I already haven't said to you. That's where I, that's where I come from, if you've heard me say it to you, then you probably hear me say it about you. But that's one of the ways that we keep it clean, for me, that's clean hands. That's the way that I keep things clean, and I keep an open conversation, and we s- we eliminate the culture of fear. So I I hope that that's clear with what I'm saying with everybody, not just with our staff, but with each other.
Trustee Reckler or trustee Christian, do you wanna, do you have any follow up or comment or question on on this item in particular? Around um the decorum that we display. You know, when we're in meetings and and how that, you know, affects the questions for Duffy or Mr. Duffy or or. Comments to him. Yes, ma'am.
Would trustee Christian like to go first?
Mr. Christian?
Yeah, uh, thank you, uh, President Phillips. Um, only thing I just have to say is that you know, always um have respect. And keeping things in um. In other words, is. You know, we're we're fellow teammates, working together. So, um, it just matter, just keeping everything professional. You know, getting mad, getting upset, storming out, that that's not professional. You know, we we just have a greater responsibility as leaders uh to lead by example. And and be the best that we can be, and that's all I have to say on that, thank you.
Amen, trustee Reckler.
Um, I just wanted to point out, I mean, you know, sometimes the most obvious. It isn't apparent until something just hits you um about how challenging this is. And that, you know, these these boards are um constantly changing. You may, uh, you know, and we have not had a great deal of stability in the leadership at the board level, and so we have constant change. And we have five different people with five different personalities and five different priorities. And, you know, we may, you know, we may not act all together as one, and yet we only have authority when we come together as one. And you are trying to run a district, and you're trying to manage your board as well and train your board. And there is a ton of training that comes into this. Um, you know, I I maybe people are born to do this, it's not me. I'm in a learning space, and so to be cognizant, you know, it, I I mean, I've thought about it for a long time. But to be cognizant of just how difficult this is, and so I just wanted to express that.
Yeah, I mean, just, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I just wanted to say that we are setting, we're setting trends because this is the first time we're in areas. So this, we're, we're making new strides and we're setting new norms. Because it's the first time we're in areas, it's the first time that all the meetings are through Zoom, it's like, we're doing a lot of firsts. So it's, I think we need to also be gentle with ourselves and know that we're setting some protocols. And hopefully some sustainability and some best practices that will outlive us on the board. But this is a lot of firsts, so we need to keep that in mind also.
Thank you, ma'am, Mr. Duffy.
I was just gonna say, sort of, last comment is, you know, in my four and a half years here, I've this, I'm now working with. My thirteenth different board member. That's a lot, a lot of people to get used to, it's a lot of bosses. Uh, it's a lot of different opinions. And cuz the question was about the staff, like, the staff knows that too, the staff sort of sees this transience. So so to speak, not in an insulting way, that's just like, there's just constant turnover. Um, so, you know, I think it's important, board members also see that and know. You know, staff's trying to like deeply invest in the time and the relationships, but also know that. You know, they they see people come, go, come, go, come, go. Um, and so they they put their head down to like get their work done. Um, so it's just a dynamic that has existed, maybe that will change over time and there'll be more stability. But it's it's a reality that I think we've just gotta navigate together.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy, uh, I appreciate that. The last thing, we're gonna move to, we're gonna dip into Rosenberg's, uh, cuz that's the next thing. On the decorum part. Um, and listen, we're supposed to be out of here at one o'clock today, and we're gonna honor that. So, you know, if we're not able to get through all of this stuff, we'll just come back, um, cuz this is important. Um, and it's information that we all need. I wanna, I'm I'm gonna put a pin in it and say, I don't even think I use that phrase correctly, uh, this is why you don't copy people. Uh, but I wanna say thank you to trustees Reckler. Trustees Reckler and Smith Folds um for really pushing uh for us to have. More. Development, you know, around, you know, being a a new board member. Uh, and so they really are the uh the inspiration for the meeting that we're having today. So I just wanna thank both of you uh for pushing for that cuz it was, it was the right call. Um, so we're going to dip into Rosenberg's just for a bit, and then we're gonna dip out. So. We are going to go to the last. Page of Rosenberg's, okay? And what you will see on this last page is courtesy and decorum. Now, remember, we haven't finished going through all of our bylaws, I'm gonna um enlarge this so you could, you know, all see it. I know you can't see it. There we go. So remember that Rosenberg's is the duly adopted rules of order. For the West Country Costa U S D Board. Um, I highlighted this whole thing, uh, but this is basically the last page of Rosenberg's. I highlighted the whole thing because I think all of it is worth reading. But I wanna focus on um just part of it, okay? So, um, if you, let's see, one, two, three, four, so. Matter of fact. If someone, I can't, if someone would not mind actually reading this, because I I I just think it's something that needs to be. Read, um, and we can take turns, you know, going through this. But if someone could start with that first paragraph, and then somebody could come into the next paragraph. I mean, I really want us to take turns with this one, uh, because this right here is. All about what we've just been talking about, which is having civil meetings uh that work. Uh, and when I say work, they're effective because we're actually getting business done, because we're focused on our work. Um, and not on on the personal kinda stuff that can happen. I'll do this in order, if you don't mind, I keep coming back to trustee Smith Folds cuz she's first. Um, can you just do that first paragraph for us?
Sure, courtesy and decorum. The rules of order are meant to create an atmosphere where the members of the body and the members of the public can attend to business efficiently. Fairly and with full participation. At the same time, it is up to the chair and the members of the body to maintain common courtesy and decorum. Unless the setting is very informal, it is always best for only one person at a time to have the floor. And it's always best for every speaker to be first recognized by the chair before proceeding to speak.
Does anybody have any questions about that? Does anybody have any questions about that first paragraph? Okay. Uh, and it, it again, you know, this is not normal. I can't remember who I was talking to and they said this to me. But this is not normal conversation, right? This is not, people don't normally communicate with each other, you know, under Rosenberg's rules. So it's not something that we're just accustomed to doing. But the purpose of it, right, is just described, right, that the purpose of it is for us to be able to get through these meetings uh in an efficient and civil way. Uh, and so that's why it's so important that we learn it, because when things begin to go haywire, which they can, which will happen sooner or later. This is what we fall back on, right? So even if we're having a difficult day, as long as we have the rules, we fall back on the rules and it gets us through. Uh, trustee Christian, can you do the next one?
Um, I can't enlarge.
Oh, you know.
Almost. I might need glass.
Join the club.
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, that's pretty small. I I I can't, yeah.
Okay, it's okay. Trust uh trustee Gonzalez, boy, can you take it?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Um, the chair should always ensure that debate and discussion of an agenda item focuses on the item and the policy in question, not the personalities of the members of the body. Debate on policy is healthy. Debate on personalities is not. The chair has the right to cut off discussion that is too personal, is too loud, or is too crude. Would you allow me to continue to the end before privilege?
Um, sure, then I'll have um.
Okay.
Can you stop at can? So just go to the next.
Debate and discussion should be focused, but free and open. In the interest of time, the chair may, however, limit the time allotted to speakers, including members of the body.
Okay, thank you. And then trustee Reckler, can you start with a can?
Sure. Can a member of the body interrupt the speaker? The general rule is no. There are, however, exceptions. A speaker may be interrupted for the following reasons. Privilege, the proper interruption would be point of privilege. The chair would then ask the interrupter to state your point. Appropriate points of privilege relate to anything that would interfere with the normal comfort of the meeting. For example, the room may be too hot or cold, or a blowing fan may interfere with a person's ability to hear. Next, you want me to keep going?
Um, you know what? Go ahead and do the order one. I should have had trustee Gonzalez read more, I'm sorry. Um, go ahead and do the order one since you started.
Uh, order, the proper interruption would be point of order. Again, the chair would ask the interrupter to state your point. Appropriate points of order relate to anything that would not be considered appropriate conduct of the meeting. For example, if the chair moved on to a vote on a motion that permits debate without allowing that discussion or debate.
And then uh trustee Smith Folds, I'm gonna wrap back to you. Uh, let me get up here to the top. Okay, this is appeal. So this is what we were talking about earlier. I think uh trustee Gonzalez Hoy had said something. Um, I don't remember what she said, but I'd start talking about the appeal. If you remember this part of the discussion, it was maybe like an hour and a half ago. Uh, but this is that. So uh trustee Smith Folds, you wanna?
Would you like me to do appeal, call for orders and withdrawal, or just stick with appeal?
Uh, just do those, do those two, do appeal and and call for orders, please.
Appeal. If the chair makes a ruling that a member of the body disagrees with, that member may appeal the ruling of the chair. If the motion is seconded and after debate, if it passes by a simple majority vote, then the ruling of the chair is deemed reversed. Call for orders of the day. This is simply another way of saying return to the agenda. If a member believes that the body has drifted from the agreed upon agenda, such a call may be made. It does not require a vote, and when the chair discovers that the agenda has not been followed, the chair may simply remind the body to return to the agenda item properly before them. If the chair fails to do so, the chair's determination may be appealed.
Thank you so much. Uh, and then I'm gonna come back to Mr. Gonzalez, boy, because I should have asked him to go further. Can you do the withdrawal motion?
Uh, sure. Withdrawal motion. During debate and discussion of a motion, the maker of the motion on the floor at any time may interrupt a speaker to withdraw his or her motion from the floor. The motion is immediately deemed withdrawn, although the chair may ask for the person who seconded the motion if he or she wishes to make the motion, and any other member may make the motion if properly recognized.
Okay, so thank you so much. So one of the things, the reason that um this whole page is, I think, important um and should be read, um, but the reason that I wanted us to 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 focus on this very briefly is because there will come times in the meeting where you want to speak and it's not your turn, right? Um, and so the question is, how do you do that appropriately, right? So it's not like you know, somebody's talking, whether it's me or somebody else, and somebody just starts talking, right? Um, there are these four ways to interrupt, right? Uh, it's the privilege uh which uh was read for us. Uh, it's, well, point of privilege, and that's what you would say. You would say point of privilege, and I would say state your privilege. Uh, it's point of order, right? And I would say, you know, state your point of order. Uh, it's, you know, the appeal, which is uh you know, I made a decision you don't agree with, you feel strongly about it, so you appeal the decision uh to the body. And then the body so chooses it can overrule, okay? And then call for orders of the day, uh, which is basically like, you know, get back on the agenda, uh, and withdraw the motion. Other than that, if it's not uh your turn to speak, if you don't have the floor, you really shouldn't be interrupting people. Uh, and and it might be hard, right? But when it wraps back to you, uh you know, that's your opportunity to say what you need to say, uh, make whatever motion you need to 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 make, ask whatever question it is. Uh, but we really, you know, should not be, you know, interrupting. And when you see on you know, in the bylaws, you'll see in Rosenberg's, right, you know, the way it should go for all of us, right, is you're you're recognized by the chair, right? So you you ask for the recognize, you're recognized. Once you're recognized, you know, that's when you begin to do whatever you're doing. But but in this section where if you're like literally, you want to interrupt, like somebody is talking, like this is how you interrupt properly, right? Um, and then when that interruption comes, there will be a brief moment where uh like, we will stop what we're doing, right, and ask, and I will ask you to state whatever it is. Um, I will make a decision on whatever it is. I may not say the ruling is, right, but you you'll see, but I'll either say, I'll either respond directly or respond through my action, right? You'll understand, right? But that's the proper way to do it. Uh, and does anybody have any questions about any of this stuff? Yes, sir.
I have a staff question, which may be a superintendent question. Um so let's say during discussion a a board member says something, makes statements that staff either really disagrees with or feels like the board members are missing a key piece of information, right? Um, like, the board members like, and staff is repeatedly not giving us information about this or we didn't get this. I don't know, I'm just creating something, right? And like, I know you have said very specifically that that board discussion time is board discussion time. But I think, you know, like, anybody, if you feel like there's a mistruth out there, like, how, what do, what do we do in that situation? Or is it just like, that's board discussion time and we're gonna have to correct that later? Um.
So, um a couple of things. So, one, uh that's why it's important to, when you are doing your presentations, so like, that's your time. Like, that is your time to pull forward whatever information that you need to pull forward, right? And then after that, there's the questions, right? And if so, somebody asks a question at that time, you know, and there's an answer to the question, that's kind of a sec, it's not time to do a second presentation, but it's a time where you can get additional information out. Once we get into board discussion, that is board discussion. One of the problems that we've had with civility has been uh board members not treating board members correctly. Uh, but another problem that we've had with civility is board members and staff members arguing with each other on the dais. That should not happen. Uh, that doesn't mean that staff has to agree with everything, but board members and staff members should not be fighting on the dais. That should not happen. Uh, and and that is wrong in just so many different levels. Um there will be times where board members say things that staff doesn't like or their staff disagrees with. There will be times when there are things that you put in the presentation that board members don't like or don't disagree with. That's just what happens. But this, this back and forth that has happened with staff, and I'm not talking about the questions, I'm talking about, we've had staff is, and board members in the past have like been arguing. That's, that's not right. Um, so you can correct, and I'll tell you, like, some board members, you know, and I'm not even gonna say names, but like, some board members know that, like, things have happened in board meetings that, like, I didn't say anything. I said something to them in private, you know, or I communicated with them somewhere in private, you know, but I didn't say it in the meeting, right? So you'll have a chance to double back. But then also, part of the job of the chair, right? Um, is to control the conduct of the meeting. And so if somebody, you know, it's one thing to to voice an opinion, but if somebody is just like literally like beating a staff member over the head and the chair doesn't say something or doesn't step in at some point, it's, it's, you could, they, not that, not to say you can't talk, right? The the board member can't talk. But in this decision where like, somebody's literally, it just, you know, it's the job of the chair, part of that person's job is to control the conduct of the meeting, which would include situations like the one that you're talking about. Um, does that make sense? But once it's, but once it's that board discussion, that's what it, that's what it is. Now, if if you know, you are listening to a board discussion, right, and the board is about to do something, not that you disagree with, right? Because the board can disagree with you, for, you know, so that's not the issue, whether you 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 disagree or not. Uh, to be frank, once it gets to the board discussion, doesn't really matter. Uh, but now, if you're listening to the board members talk and, for example, you see that we're about to do something illegal, for example, right? Um, like, not we disagree, but like, like legally, you guys are, then, you know, you need to figure out a way to get the chair's attention. Uh, so we don't walk off a cliff. But short of something like that, once we're in discussion, we're we're in discussion. Uh, I'm gonna take these in order because I see two hands. Uh, Smith Folds?
So here's a, here's a example of my vulnerability. It's very anxious for me to figure out when I'm gonna have or if I'm gonna have a second bite of the apple. So when we do questions, like, I I feel anxious because I feel like if I don't throw it all up that it's gonna get, I'm not gonna be able to come back to it, or I don't know quite how to come back to it, or how to have a robust and um conversation to completion when we're doing discussions. So I would be happy to be guided in that realm. Um, I guess my question would be, how do we get a second bite at the apple if we listen to our colleagues and our fellow board members and then something comes up? And like, oh, I really need to ask this question, or I really would like to make a follow, a follow up statement. How do, how do we go by, how do we go uh through that? What's the process?
So, I mean, uh, very, a very simple question is, I mean, a very simple answer is, once we go through, I can just ask, does anybody have any additional questions? Uh, and and that's a very easy way, and I just need to make a note to myself to do that. It's a very easy way to address what you're saying. The only thing that I, that I will say, you know, about that though, is questions beget questions. So like, I take depositions, right? And if you tell me one thing, I got like ten more questions off of that one thing that you just told me. And if you give me another one, I go with it. So like, at some point, like, we have to realize that and this goes back to like coming, you know, prepared, right, for the meeting. So you 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 have thought through the things that are important for you. Once you get into the meeting space, though, yes, people will say things that that trigger new questions for you. Uh, you will, that will always happen. It happens all the time and that's normal. So I mean, I can make a habit of just saying, you know, are there any more questions? But realize that there are only so many questions that can be asked and 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 we still get through the meeting because there are five people, right? Not just one, there are five people with these additional questions. And so, and before I I I I go off too far, right? You know, we talked about all of the things that we do to get prepared for the meetings, which helps us with that. Uh, Mr. Gonzalez Hoy brought this up earlier, that we have, you know, this committee structure that we're really, you know, putting into place. So things that are more complex, uh, you know, like, I'll give you an example. Uh, staff wanted to to bring stuff about DLI. And the stuff that they were talking about, we were talking about major changes, it was really complex. And I was like, nah, you guys need to go to the academic subcommittee to work on some of this before it comes to the full board. So there will be spaces, and we're just getting those committees kind of really going. But when they're all like kicking full steam, and I agree, Chair Reckler did a great job. But when those committees are like running full steam, right, those are the spaces where you'll be able to really do deep dives as well. Not that we won't have conversations in the board meetings, because we will, but you know, trustee Reckler, she was all in the the nicks and the crannies, you know, in that subcommittee meeting like she should have been, because that's the space for that. So we have multiple ways, uh, and some of them are still being fleshed out, but we have multiple ways for you to get those questions out. But a very simple answer to your question is, I can make a mental note to start, you know, just saying, you know, does anybody have any more questions? And 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 if you do, please, that shouldn't be like ten more questions. That should be the, you know, I didn't think about this and, which you guys do sometimes, right? Uh, but I get it, you're asking me to create a space so you don't have to just interrupt, and I will work to do that, okay? Does that work? Or does that answer the question?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Gonzalez, boy?
Thank you, President Phillips. Um, so thinking of a specific example of what Mr. Duffy's talking about. Um, I think like our first board meeting in January, we were approving certain contracts um for for programs. And we had, you know, the discussion, I mean, the questions, the presentation, then we had the questions from the board, and then we moved to public comment. Um, and in public comment, there was a comment made that could have led to confusion during the voting. Um, it was something around like, you're using all these general funds to pay for things and you have to return our class size, right? And I I interjected after public comment and I asked the question of, isn't it true President Phillips and Mr. Duffy that we're using CARES funding? And I'll be good, the reason why I think it's a good example is because in that situation, it could have led to potentially some of us voting differently if we would have known it was general funds versus CARES funding, right? Um, in that situation, looking at our bylaws and Um, in that situation, looking at our bylaws on public comment, the staff can. Respond to something mentioned in public comment to clarify, correct? And same with us. That might be a space for. An additional question or clarification, if, if really needed, if something's mentioned that might confuse us. To make a really appropriate vote. Does that make sense?
It, it does, so the only thing. So. Somewhere in this conversation, and we're not gonna be able to make it today, there is a spot in here around public comment and that's board bylaw ninety-three twenty-three. Um, and I don't know that we will make it, um, it looks like we're gonna have to come back, uh, which is okay, but. The, the space that I'm specifically talking about right now is like, Mr. Duffy, when we're in the discussion space, we're in that discussion space, but if somebody. Does make a comment. Um, in public comment, which is what, a comment in public comment, which is what Mr. Gonzalez Hoi is talking about right now. There are, are ways for us to make brief statements. I'm still, still in that public comment section, right? But what we don't. Necessarily want to do is to just begin having communication, right? With them, so like one way to, to, to do, right? What you're talking about within that space. Right? Is. And particularly that kind of thing that you're talking about is more around, I, in my opinion anyway, more around like the general public comment. Um, but like, so like, let's say somebody, because I do this, this is a great example, I do this. I don't wanna say a lot, but I do it, like somebody will say something in public comment. And when the discussion item comes back around, right? If you know, Mr. Gonzalez Hoi, something is not correct. Just say it. Right? Like, like when the discussion item comes, just like literally say it, right? Like. This money is coming out of X, right? Or I remember the conversation was CARES Act money, like actually this is being, is coming, you can say that, and now be right, you know what I mean? When you say it's, you're not putting out misinformation, but so there's a way to kind of slip in. That correction if you need to in your comments and discussion, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I think that was, I think I was more referring about staff, if they hear something that they believe. Could potentially lead to us voting differently. Because I, I tend to really believe what people call in and tell us, right? If they call in and tell us, right, like, we don't have soap at. Murphy, right? I'm gonna believe him, right? And I'll follow up with Mr. Duffy and say, why is there no soap at Murphy, right? I mean, I have to assume by some intentions, maybe there is. But like if they call in and they say, you can't vote for this as being out of general fund. And we head into the voting. Me assuming that's correct, but Mr. Duffy knowing it's not, but not being able to say it. That's, that's kind of where I'm heading at, like if there, if Mr. Duffy sees there's potentially something that is not true. That could lead us to, that has not been discussed, that, that could lead us to voting differently. Uh, because it's coming from a really good source, right? Like a labor partner, right? But it's not correct. My, my hope is that he would be able to very briefly make the correction before we us. All of us, you know, vote or discuss it or whatever, um, if there's space allows it.
Yeah, so one of the things that we haven't done is like. Be, just because of time, because we're gonna go over like the format for the meeting from Rosenberg's. And so. No, is what I'm saying, because following the format that we're supposed to be following, people will, people will call in. All the time, and they will say things and some of those things will be true. Some of those things will be false, and I'm not, and some of those things will be somewhere in between, right? And so again, it's kind of going back to the meeting preparation as well. And it's also going back to making sure that, you know, when staff is giving us information. That they're giving us, you know, not treatises, but that they're giving us thorough information, you know, as well. And then also making sure that when we have the opportunity to ask questions, that we're using that time, you know, wisely and asking good questions. Because with all of the agenda items that we have. Uh, or that could potentially be on an agenda, if, if we were doing that. The meeting time would just. It, it would be ridiculous at the end of the day, we wouldn't get out. So. Like I said, so if, but if a board member knows something, right? Just slip it in, you know? Uh, but once we get to the discussion thing, and that's the other thing that used to happen as well. Uh, when we're talking about decorum, right? So there are five board members. Uh, that were elected by the public, and then there are two board members that are student trustees. What would happen in the last board, and probably you guys saw this, is. Staff. When they would disagree or would want the board members to do, to do certain things. Like they would actually in the middle of the board discussion. Start lobbying for what it is that they want, you know, they'd be like, uh, you know, I think you should really do this, and like. It, they would literally come in and change the whole direction of board conversations. Uh, and that's another one of the reasons why I really want it when it's board discussion. Because there are only five elected board members and, and they're you guys plus me. And staff is, we don't have a sixth board member or a seventh board member, I mean, you count this, the students, but you, you get what I'm trying to say. So that's the other reason, Mr. Gonzalez Hoi, why. It needs to, because I've literally watched whole boats change on multiple occasions. Because staff just jumps into the board discussion and just changes the direction of everything.
Yeah, and just to clarify, I don't disagree with, with any of that. Um, I do think that hopefully when we do this again, I do want us to talk about that bylaw. Because it, to me, when I read it, it strict, it, it, it reads and says that staff. And board members can respond if there's misinformation to public comment, that could lead to a disruption of the board. Um, and that's kind of what I was commenting on, um, we can move on, but I just wanna put a pin on it because. I, 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 I don't wanna say I disagree, I think that we are talking about two different things.
Okay.
Um, and, and I think that we're both correct. Uh, but I think that we're, I was just making a reference to something different, so when we get to that bylaw today or next time. Um, maybe we can discuss that a little further.
And I'll go back and look at the, look at it too. So I, I, I can go back and look at it too, I just. I will go back and look at it too, okay? Um, trustee Smith Folds.
Hi, I just had one question, I didn't wanna jump ahead of trustee Reckler or Christian, I don't know if they had the opportunity to go. But I did have a question, when you were talking about, how do we kind of respond back to something that we hear that someone calls in without. Violating any of the board bylaws about not talking back to someone. May I ask an example? For example, when someone calls in and says, oh, you're not supposed to, you're not supposed to abstain so much. And then during discussion, it, would that be the proper place to say, well, according to board bylaw extensions? Or is it just you drop it and you just keep moving forward? Is my question clear?
It is, and what, and, and what we're talking about right now is not necessarily a bylaw, we're talking about style. Like how do you do something in the moment, right? Uh, and so you could just drop it. You know, another thing is to just weave it into your comments, right? Uh, so like what you just did, I mean, you could say, you know. Uh, if a board member, if, if somebody calls in and says you can only abstain over a conflict of interest. Right? And you know that the board bylaw that we just read says if you have a compelling reason, or you know that, you know. Uh, it's quite okay to abstain, you know, if you don't have enough information, you just weave that in. You know, I, you know, I'm choosing to abstain because I don't, I don't feel I have enough information. You know, and that's a common reason for board members to do it, you know, or I have a compelling reason to abstain and, and you say what it is if you want. And board bylaw XXX says that, because a lot of people call in and, and, and pretend that they know everything and they don't. You know, so, you know, there's ways to just. Gently, and you don't even have to say their name. You know, but they know who you're talking about. Uh, and everybody else will too, and then you just kind of move on.
Okay, thank you so.
Do that.
Thank you so much for that, I appreciate it.
Okay. Trustee Reckler.
Thank you. So I do very much uh, enjoy and respect the space of a board discussion. However, I do wanna be sensitive to uh, misinformation or, or a lack of information. And I'm reading the Zoom, you know, there's multiple things going on in these meetings, but I'm reading the Zoom too. And when I see staff kick back or lean in. I know that, you know, we don't have it, we may not have it exactly right, or there may be very critical things that need to be added. And I do want to ensure that we're, um, that we're entertaining that, not to the point of distraction. But I, I think it's really important that we figure out, um, you know, I, I, none of us would want to make a decision or. Or have a mistruth, or you know, like whatever it is, so I'm just hoping that we can, um, you know. Weave that in, so thank you.
I'm, I'm just letting, since we're having this, I'm just letting you know, we're gonna follow Rosenberg's. If the body wants to choose a different rule of order, then we can, but unless that happens, we're gonna follow Rosenberg's. Which means that staff needs to come correct with his presentations. We need to come correct with our questions and we'll all get better over time. We haven't been following Rosenberg's. And I don't know when there was a board that really did. So staff is, you know, there's, there is a lot of new. Right? So staff is not used to using this either, even though it's been the, you know, in the board bylaws since whenever. So, I mean, we're all getting used to, and I, to doing something differently. And I believe that when we get it fine tuned and we're comfortable with it. I just believe it's going to be, I mean, I, you already see, even though some people get upset with what we're doing. For, you know, different reasons, I think everybody already sees. That the meetings are going much differently, and it's not just because we're treating each other with civility. It's also because we're following the rules. Um, and things will get easier and as people understand it more. But again, you know. We're going to make decisions, this is like democracy. Like we are going to make decisions that staff doesn't agree with. And sometimes we're gonna be one hundred percent right when we make those decisions. And sometimes we're gonna look back after the fact and be like, ah, we could have did that one better. That is literally representative democracy. Uh, and I know that. That's not always a comfortable thing. But that's the system that we have. In America, and I'm not trying to do a, a speech or anything like that. But I agree.
But with the best information, so I don't, you know, if I disagree with staff, I don't have a problem with that, but, but with the best information, so thank you.
Yeah, yeah, and, and that best information, they need to do good presentations. And when you guys ask the questions, they need to give you the answers. You know, and when we are preparing for meetings, all the things that we talked about today, right? When you have question, they need to, to, all of the stuff that we talked about today is part of that truth seeking. That, that leaders are supposed to do, and if we're all truth seeking and then, and you know, and the truth of the matter is, we're not staff. You know, they're leaders in their own capacity as well. So they should be truth seeking as well, so when they give us information. It's information that we've gotten after they've gone through a process to collect that information and give it to us, if that makes sense. So we have, I think we have beat that one to death, um, so it's twelve forty-three. We don't really have. This is what we have left on this list. And so this is kind of what I wanna do, and you guys kind of direct me and then we could fill in the rest, okay? So. We got through. Uh, decorum. And what's left is conflict of interest, closed session. Public comment, which we were just kind of talking about. Consent, we kind of did that, um, and then rules of order, uh, which is the specific board bylaw that deals with that in Rosenberg's. We maybe only have time to cover one more thing. Um, I know we're not gonna be able to get through the last one, which is the rules of order, we'll have to come back for that one. Uh, but is there any? Uh, and you guys could all kind of chime in, is there anything that's left on this list, probably besides? Uh, Rosenberg's, maybe one of the public comment, because I know that that issue has come up a lot recently. But, uh, trustee Smith Folds.
I would vote to do public comment.
Okay. Trustee Christian, is there one? Because we really only have time for one more.
I was, I called the same thing with. Um, trustee, uh, Jamila Smith Folds, uh, public comment.
Okay, Mr. Gonzalez Hoi. Public comment, okay, trustee Reckler.
That's fine.
Okay, alright, so we'll skip ahead to public comment. Um, and that's ninety-three twenty-three, and then we'll set a date where we could come back and kind of go through the rest of the stuff. Okay. So, uh, this is public comment, uh.
Am I up? Am I reading?
You can.
Okay, I was gonna, I was pre-reading, because I was like, oh, I'm gonna be up again, um.
So let me, let me, um, just kind of scoot, scoot to the. And this is some of the overlap, uh. So the board president shall conduct board meetings in accordance with board bylaws and procedures, we've talked about that already, there's a lot of overlap. The parliamentary procedures, that's where, if you didn't know where, it says that we are. Operating under Rosenberg's, that's where that is, but public participation. Here we go, this section is pretty long. I have highlighted the part that trustee, uh, Gonzalez Hoi was talking about. So we can do. We can start there. Uh, yes, let's start with three.
Okay. Without taking action, board members or district staff members may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed by the public. About items not appearing on the agenda. Additionally, on their own initiative or in response to a question posed by the public, a board or staff member may ask a question for clarification. Make a brief statement or make a brief report on his or her own activities. Furthermore, the board or a board member may provide a reference to staff or other resources for factual information. Ask staff to report back to the board as a, at subsequent meeting. At a subsequent meeting concerning any matter or take action directing staff to place a matter of business on a future agenda. Continue.
Let's stop right there. So I'm gonna tell you, like. The way I am seeing this, right? So, um, Mr. Gonzalez Hoi, if you remember earlier. Um, when we were talking about, um, the general public comment, and I was like, that's more for the, like more for the general comment than the, the item public comment. So like if you see it says without taking action, board members or district staff may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed by the public about items. Not appearing on the agenda, so like that's, that's the general public comment, um, that comes right before. The consent calendar, does that make sense?
Thank you for that, yeah, I think that like you read something five times and you missed two words and it makes a big difference, right? So I think that like I, I, when I read it, I thought it was all public comments, but I think that you are right. Because specifically where it says not appearing on the agenda, um, that speaks about the main public comment, so I, I believe you're correct.
But here's the thing though, so, but you said something else, like two people, you, more than one person could be right at a time. So if you remember what I was saying, like there's ways to weave things in. Right? So like, if you look at the second sentence where it says additionally on their own initiative or in response to questions posed by the public. Um, a board member or staff, you know, so like when we get to our discussion, right? Um, even though, I mean, this is about, you know, this is, this is really about general, whatchamacallit, general public comment. But like when we get to the discussion, like there's no reason you can't. Just make a statement. I mean, I do it. You know, and like I said, you don't necessarily have to say the name of the person, you know, board member X said, you can just. You can just do it, right? Um, i- in the context, so it's. Um, i- in the context, so it's not even necessarily a procedural thing, you know, if you wanna, if you wanna respond to something. You can. Does that make sense? Okay. And, yeah, so, anyway, so yeah, that, that, hopefully that addresses what you were, what we were talking about. Okay. The next thing is, if we can go down, you know, before I do that, I'm sorry, cause we're starting to run out of time. I'm starting to move faster. Does anybody have any questions about that section? Okay. So this is the big thing that's been coming up recently, is number five. There's more in here than that, uh, but I wanted to kinda hit this because it's been coming up. Uh, and I know that we've gotten emails about it and, and all of those kinda, you know, things. So, um, is there somebody who can read five for us? Okay.
I'd be happy to.
Okay.
A person wishing to be heard by the board shall be, shall first be recognized by the president and shall then proceed to comment as briefly as the subject permits. Would you like me to continue? Although it's six. Individual speakers shall be allowed up to three minutes to address the board on each agenda or non-agenda item. The board shall limit the total time for public input on each item to twenty minutes. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public presentation. Depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to be heard, the president may take a poll of speakers for or against a particular issue and may ask that additional persons speak only if they have something new to add.
Okay, thank you so much. So, the twenty-minute rule that, uh, you know, and I wanna, let me do this one last thing really quick. So I'm gonna scroll down to the bottom. And this is the bottom of the, uh, the rule. So you can see, it says revised on September sixteen, two thousand fifteen, right? So that should be the last day that this was updated, and it was originally adopted in May two thousand seven. So everybody see that? I have no way, I wasn't on the board in two thousand fifteen, so I have no way of knowing when the twenty-minute rule was created. But I know that it was created sometime between two thousand seven and two thousand fifteen, right? So this twenty-minute rule that everybody's complaining about now is, well, not everybody, that some people are complaining about right now, it's not new. People, boards have just been ignoring it. It is at a minimum of five years, six years old, or going on six years old. And at a maximum, I guess it would have birthday, so at a minimum it's five years old, at a maximum, it's thirteen years old. Right? If it was adopted in oh-seven. Boards just have not been following it. And so people are, um, being exposed to this for the first time, and it is freaking them out. But it is not something that, you know, we're pulling out of thin air. It's something that's been on the books literally for years. The second sentence, where it says with board consent, the president may increase or decrease. So, what that is saying is that, not that the president shall, the president may. So the president has the discretion to increase or decrease public comment. But in order to increase or decrease, that person has to have the consent of the board. Doesn't really have to be a vote, you know, but, you know, so like, that night, you know, in public comment, where I was like, we had time left, and I was like, can we, you know, do you guys, are you guys okay if we move this to forty minutes instead of the usual twenty? And you guys said, okay. That was in line with the bylaws, because I can do that, or whoever else will be the president, you can do that, but you just need to get the consent. What's a little different, though, um, and I tried to say this in the dais, but we didn't have a conversation about the, the bylaw. And obviously I didn't pull it up. The board, as a whole, the decision of whether to extend or, or decrease is the chair's decision. So it's not, you know, I feel like as an individual, increasing or decreasing. Like, it's like what happened where I asked, and I was like, hey, is it, you guys, is it okay? These, if I extend this, and you guys said yes. But like, we should not be in a situation where like, like, individual board members, I mean, I guess technically, somebody. I mean, actually, like, if we talk about like, the interruptions or whatnot, like, we have the four ways to interrupt, right? That not, is not really one of them. Um, so I just, if we all are kinda aware of what the rules are, uh, and it was a great suggestion to do that, right? And I, and that's why we did it. But if we're all aware of what the rules are, then we all kinda stay on the same page. Because, and also like, when we're going through the meetings, I'm kinda trying to map out the meetings in my mind, so we actually can get through them on time. So I, I just wanted to share that. Um, and I think that has to be it for this evening, or today, just because we don't really have any more time. And that was a big one that's been coming up recently. Uh, but does anybody have any questions about that one in particular? Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I do have a question, uh, and somebody can send me the link. Where does the three, two, one live? We used to have like, three minutes, this many people to want. Where does, where does that live?
So, I, Mr. Duffy, you can speak to it. I'm not aware of where that lives, and I'm not aware of that's just what they were doing. But, like, in this bylaw, what it actually says, it has the time in it. And it has up to three minutes, right? Not three minutes as in up to three minutes. So, does that make sense? The time is actually-
Yeah, no, I just wanna know where that lives, because I've heard it ten thousand times. I've read everything that I think I can get my hands on, and I'm not able to locate that.
Okay.
And I'm trying, I'm gonna try to be a self-learner before I ask, so.
Yep, I will, I will look to locate that for us. So, I need to make sure I know where that is. But I believe I have seen that clearly in writing. And maybe, Mr. Phillips, you can just quickly clarify, whether, if it's just one speaker for an agenda item or for general public comment, are we saying, like, just that one speaker is three minutes? Or we basically saying the max right now, no matter who it is, how many it is, is gonna be a minute and a half?
We're saying that it's, 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 it's standardized. So it's twenty minutes, a minute and a half per speaker. So there's two people, that's what it is. If there's twenty people, that's what it is. And then also, like, one day, I'm not gonna be the chair. And so like, if, you know, the rule is right there. There's, it's up to three minutes, right? So if somebody wants to do three minutes for everybody for twenty, that's their choice, right? But right now, it's, it's, it's standardized.
I'm practicing. Uh, we have to extend the meeting. It's, it's almost one o'clock. Just, just wanna give you a heads up. Sorry, I interrupted.
No, that, and you did it perfectly. So can we, can I have a motion to extend the meeting for fifteen minutes? And then, um, can I have a motion to do that, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Uh, that was one hundred percent perfectly done. So on the question, trustee Smith Folds?
Yes.
Uh, trustee Christian?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Hoi?
Yes.
And trustee Reckler?
Yes.
Trustee Reckler, you asked for this meeting. Phillips, yes. Okay, all right. So, uh, we're extended for fifteen minutes. We're gonna just wrap up these questions. And then we are going to just finish this, this is only a couple of things, cause we have to announce the next meeting. Uh, trustee Smith Folds?
So I have a question. In this, in this bylaw, it says that the board shall limit the total time for public input on each item to twenty minutes. So does that mean every time we have a discussion item, and then we call for public comment, that public comment is twenty minutes? And then it's another discussion item, and that public comment is twenty minutes. Am I reading that correctly? Because it says each item.
It, you're, yes, you're reading it correctly. Each item, so it doesn't have to last for twenty minutes, right? It could end at ten minutes. But if there's twenty minutes worth of public comment, yes, it's twenty minutes on every item. Which is why, which is why when we're in agenda setting, you know, we're looking so closely at how many items there are. Because yes, it's every item.
Okay. And then my second question is, I just wanna make sure that I heard you correctly. When it comes to extending public comment, you can do it, but we can't ask where it to be done. Is the simple, the simplified version of what you, the summary of what you said, is that correct?
If I was really boiling it down, that, yes, that I can ask for it, and you guys could tell me yes or no.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, any other questions on this? Okay. All right. So, um, we completed, let's see, let me get out of this, so we can all kinda see where we are. So we completed, we did the exercise, which was led by trustee Reckler, which was fantastic. Thank you. Everybody understands how the agendas are created and how to get items on the agenda. Uh, and, and let me say this very quickly, cause I think I've said it to you guys in private, but I haven't said it in public. Everybody here was elected. Everybody here, in my opinion, has the right to have items placed on the agenda. Uh, so, you know, I, I just think that that is undemocratic for people not to be able to do that. Uh, and so, you know, sometimes it may look a little differently. You know, like trustee Gonzalez Hoi, you know, he had a great idea about recognizing, um, the food service workers, right? And then that ended up in a conversation, uh, that I had with Mr. Duffy about bringing back the employee recognition, right? So, it's, it gets done. It's gonna happen, right? So, it's just kinda like how we, how we do things, but everybody's, doesn't mean we are gonna agree on the same thing, and it doesn't mean that everything is gonna pass. But I believe in people's right to actually represent. So I just wanna say that publicly, cause I know I said it privately. Uh, and I just wanna say it publicly. Um, so people know about the agendas. Um, we've talked about preparing for the meetings. Um, so people have ideas around that. We've discussed roles of board members. We've discussed decorum. And we've talked about, um, public comment. Um, as a matter of fact, I'm gonna check off the consent for board bylaw ninety-three twenty-two, um, cause we really did that as well. So the only thing that we really have left is, uh, conflict of interest, closed session, and then the rules of order. Um, and to be truthful, we could probably do closed session indirectly in closed session, right? Just as we're going through, kind of explaining why things are there. So we could figure that one out that way. We still would have to do conflict of interest, and we'll have to come back to do the Rosenberg, Rosenberg's rules of order. So, but that's where we're gonna leave it for today. Um, and now we're gonna move on to item C, which is comments from the board. Um, and we'll start with, uh, trustee Smith Folds?
Um, I just wanna thank everybody for giving up their Saturday. Thank you staff for being here. Thank you board members for being here. I just wanna, I want us to lead with positive intentions. And then, oh, sorry, Mr. Phillips, were you gonna say, trustee Phillips, were you gonna say something?
No, I was just nodding my head.
Yeah. I want us to continue to lead with positive intentions. I want us to become a better and better board because we are being self-reflective, and that we are all growing and we're all helping each other to be the best version of ourselves. I want us to make sure that when we say the board, it means that we all have, even if we don't agree, we've all discussed it. And if it doesn't come out to the public, like, as under the umbrella of the board, it means that we haven't had the discussion. It's just one person, or one, two people, or three people. But when we say something to the public that the board has done it, we've all come together, and we've all discussed it, and we've all had our voices heard. To piggyback on what you're saying about the true idea of what democracy is. All voices come to the table and all voices are heard, and then we can put that out with confidence and with integrity to the public that the board has said X, Y, and Z. Again, thank you, everyone. Thank you for giving me the space to learn and to grow, and I just continue, wanna be better. I continually want to be better. Thank you, Pres- uh, President Phillips.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, trustee Christian?
Yes, I thank you, President Phillips, and I just wanna say, um, uh, we, we worked through this today. And, um, as we build together, um, and that we'll continue to push forward. And, uh, I just wanna thank everybody. Um, like I said, I'm, I'm in a learning process. And, um, that's pretty much, you know, we just got a lot to do. Thank you.
You know what? We got to moving so quickly. Um, I skipped something. And trustee Smith Folds, you just brought it back to my, I just, I skipped something. We actually were supposed to have, and it was your last question, we were supposed to have public comment, um, on the item. And we did not have public comment on the item. So if you guys, uh, would just give me a moment. Uh, Mr. Duffy, uh, we have to just go back for a little bit. Is there any public comment on item B one?
We have one hand. It's been raised for a while. Uh, so I think it was just on probably that, uh, B, which is Tom Panis.
Okay.
Uh, now we have a second hand.
Okay. So a minute and thirty seconds for both.
And this is on item B.
Yes, yes, B one, planning, preparing for and conducting school board meetings.
Okay, so, uh, Tom Panis, you may go ahead. Uh, Mr. Panis, if you are there, you can unmute and go ahead.
Good afternoon, President Phillips, members of the board and district staff. You have board bylaw ninety-two seventy on the agenda today. Didn't quite get to it. I'd like to remind the board that it is not yet adopted a revision to board bylaw ninety-two seventy that conforms to the report of the forensic accounting investigation recommendation. When the board accepted the final report of the forensic accounting investigation, it included recommendation FI, that's forensic investigation one dash one regarding conflict of interest. Uh, the company that did the forensic accounting investigation, VLS, assigned this item to the high-risk category, which they defined as there is a high likelihood that the district may be at risk for waste in proper expenditure or fraud related to board bond program expenditures. The dollar impact would be significant, and the impact on the perception trust would be significant. The current bylaw ninety-two seventy needs to be amended as suggested by the forensic accounting investigation. And the amendment proposed by the staff at the December sixteen meeting, which, which was actually tabled, was in no way compliant with the VLS recommendation. I hope that you will soon adopt a revision to board bylaw ninety-two seventy that complies with the recommendation of the forensic accounting investigation. Thank you for your time this afternoon.
Thank you. The next speaker is Joseph Glazer. Mr. Glazer, you may unmute.
Hi, um, thank you, Joseph Glazer, Hercules Middle. So, I'd like to get some clarity, and I don't know how you're able to respond directly or not in this case. But I'd like to get some clarity on the public comment issue in terms of how we can improve the situation. And, you know, what I'm hearing from people and what I'm feeling like is to have more time for public comment, a lot longer time available, higher interest items at the beginning of the meeting instead of at the end of the meeting. And the public comment on specific items to be at the beginning of the item rather than at the end. Because right now, people are staying up three, four, or five hours. People are dropping out. They don't wanna be involved anymore. I'm feeling like I don't even know if I wanna go to board meetings anymore, because I feel like my voice isn't valued. And it's like, you're, you're joining the lottery. So maybe your ticket will get pulled and, and you'll get to speak, and maybe it won't. And that's just not fair. That's not the way to treat people in the public. That's not the way to treat your district employees who work so hard. And especially those that are on the front lines dealing with this. It's getting depressing dealing with the situation. There has to be a way for things to get better in this. And this is reaching a crisis point of people's voices being shut out. So I wanna know what can be- And this is reaching a crisis point of people's voices being shut out. So I want to know what can be done. Can board members motion? As far as I'm concerned, they can, based on my understanding, that board members can and should be able to motion. To extend public comment, to move items around in the agenda and to really make these meetings more democratic. Because it's always been a problem on the board of these kinds of issues, but it's gotten worse and worse um in this new session. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glazer. That's the end of public comment.
Thank you very much uh to everybody who called in for public comment and um please accept my apology for not having that. Where it was uh supposed to be. And I'm gonna jump back to where we were because we were doing board comments and um who was the person who was up next? Mr. Gonzalez Hoy.
I think unless someone correct me, I think trustee Christian had just gone, so I think it was me. Okay, awesome. Uh, thank you, President Phillips, for this meeting. Thank you, trustee Reckler and Smith Folds for suggesting it and Mr. Duffy for organizing it. Uh, Saturday meetings are always so hard because my only time off, so I was like dreading it, but I'm really actually glad we had it. Because it does make things a little clearer, even though we've all been involved for quite a bit of time, so I'm glad we did have it. I actually wanted to propose that for the next one that we have, that as homework, we actually maybe watch. A board meeting from another district uh that looks like ours, like San Francisco's not the best example. But like I play like a large urban district uh that deals with similar issues, just so that we continue to learn what to do, what not to do. Um, that uses Rosenbergs, uh so we see people in action. Maybe our passports are not the best examples. I was gonna suggest watching a previous meeting, but I think it might be good, just other board meeting. So so I want to put it out there, see if maybe uh President Phillips, you thought it was a good idea and uh maybe as a case study, right? We can talk about it at the beginning of the next study session or retreat that we have. And then, you know, my comment was just around, um, you know, I know that like this past uh uh study session. We discussed something really big that is that is passionate for a lot of people and we're gonna continue to do that. As as we have these study sessions and and very large conversations. Um, I just hope that we all take in each other's perspective informing the meeting. Um, and and as we have, you know, speakers or whoever, we ask for each other's input and who we want to see there. Um, because I think that like, we've expressed this before, but like if if I'm known for something in the next two years when we leave. That I want people to know about us as a team is, hey, they were a great team together. They didn't always agree on issues, but they were a great team, right? They're like exactly what we talked about today, right? Like they behaved well, they were a great example to what should be, what should be happening in the classrooms. Right of our students. Um, that's my goal. Um, and and I think that like the more that we include each other's input, the more that we're empathetic to each other, the more that actually we're gonna do that, right? And it's gonna be reflective to of our of our of our work, especially during hard conversations. Um, so I wanted, you know, I wanted to put that out there. Um, um, and you know, with the hope that that we continue to develop those relationships, but also to to listen to one another. As we create the study sessions or whatever it is, right? Um, and the last thing is, oh, I had one more item and I forgot it. So well, I'm, see you all next week, so I'll remember by Wednesday. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, trustee Reckler.
Thank you. Once again, I echo all the sentiments of the board members. I thank staff very deeply and I want you to enjoy your weekend because I am done. I cannot take in another item. No more information until Monday. Um, and then, of course, I'm gonna give some homework. Nobody is to touch this. Um, just is there a printed handbook of our bylaws somewhere? If not, I will print everything out myself, but if there's something lying around. Um, the second is, is the most up to date governance handbook from July nineteenth, twenty seventeen? And then, you know, I I'd like to have another discussion about how we update those and merge them because there are misalignments. And if you know anything about me, that stuff drives me crazy. So um. That that's, nobody is to touch that for, that is not a priority and that's it and I thank you very much and I want everybody to enjoy the weekend.
Thank you so uh so much. I hope that this was helpful. Um, and again, I want to thank uh trustee Smith Folds and trusted trustee Reckler for prodding. Uh, on this because you were definitely right. Uh, I want to thank Mr. Duffy uh for participating with us. Um, you were very uh helpful, uh and I hope that uh I know that everybody enjoyed having you be part of this. I know I did. Uh, so that said, our next scheduled meeting is the twenty-seventh. Uh, and we will come back to the other things that we, it won't be next week, but we will come back. And deal with with Rosenbergs and all that kind of stuff. Our next meeting is on the twenty-seventh. Um, and then that's a regular board meeting and then we have a study session on February third. Uh, Mr. Gonzalez Hoy, uh just so you know, Mr. Duffy sent out an email to the solutions team. Asking them if they have suggested speakers or topics for our study sessions. Uh, and I hope I didn't just do this in my mind, but I think I sent an email to to. Board members saying send suggestions to, did I do this or was this just in my mind?
That one might have been in your mind, but.
You sent it just to me.
I don't know, because I've been so busy, I can't.
I know that you did, I know that you sent me something saying if you have suggestions for the next retreat, please send them to the superintendent. And when I looked, I was the only one on there, so I don't know if you DCC people or not, but I know I got an email.
Mr. Gonzalez Hoy, did you see something?
I I, yes, I actually got the same email, but it said for future retreats, not not for like the next study session. So if it was, you know, for the next study session, um.
It's for studies, that's what I was.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah, I miss, I miss, misread it. It, I believe, like, uh, I read a for future retreats, like.
Too late now, sorry.
Oh, yeah, so bottom line is, if any of you have, because we're gonna, um. You know, we're gonna have to have more than two, right? Uh, so, because it's just so much information to cover, so like if you have a suggested topic. Uh, then, you know, please, you know, send it to Mr. Duffy, just, you know, copy me. Uh, and like we'll try to figure it out, uh, because it's it's just, there's just a lot. I think we needed to really start with public health experts. But there's more to that. Uh, there are more layers to that. Solutions, they already have, you know, been offered. Uh, that too, just so you know. Uh, but anyway, so the twenty-seventh is our next regular meeting. February third is the next study session. And. That is that, and so I'll move on to item E, which is adjournment. Thank you, everybody, for being here today and for participating. I really appreciate you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Bye bye.